Good afternoon, everyone. I am Kate Ford, and at 4:40 on October 26, 2021, I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board. As it states on the agenda, due to the changes required in Assembly Bill 361, the public may now call in to the meeting in real time by raising their hand on Zoom during each separate agenda item. Therefore, if there are members of the public who want to speak to an agenda item right now which is related to closed session only, please raise your hand on Zoom now. Ms. Trujillo, will you take a look and tell me if there are any members of the public who wish to comment?
No public comment.
Thank you very much. Then, board members, we will adjourn to closed session and then return to open session, our regular session, at 5:30 p.m. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Ford, and we have concluded closed session this evening. It's Tuesday, October 26, 2021. At exactly 5:30 p.m., I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District School Board. And now for information about interpretation for this meeting.
Thank you, Board President Ford. I will give this announcement in both English and Spanish with regards to interpretation. Buenas tardes. Voy a dar este anuncio sobre la interpretación en inglés y en español. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or a desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "interpretation." Please click on the globe now and select "English." If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation", then select "English" and click "Done." And remember, when it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. We are also offering American Sign Language, ASL, interpretation for this meeting. If you will be using ASL interpretation, please use the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you joined this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the ASL interpreter at all times. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es pilingue, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es pilingue, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha, en forma de globo, que dice "interpretación." Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "español." Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, localice el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas," elija "español," y "finalizar." O si están en inglés, dice "done." Y recuerde, cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor, hable con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Gracias. Are there any questions with regards to interpretation? If there are none, then we may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Dr. Maldonado, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In closed session, the Board took action to approve the October 11, 2021, final settlement agreement and general release between Parents and District in Student versus Santa Barbara Unified School District Special Education Due Process Case, OAH, case number 2021-080860, pursuant to which the District has agreed to fund and to provide educational services to the student, and the student's parents have agreed to release claims against the District in exchange for educational services as specified in the agreement. The motion was made by Ms. Alvarez and seconded by Ms. Simsmotin, and the five members, it was unanimous, voted in favor of approving the agreement. Tonight, the Board is again meeting in person, wearing masks as mandated by Santa Barbara County Public Health for the month of October, and the public may participate through live streaming. As we did last week, as a result of Assembly Bill 361, we now have new guidelines regarding public comment while conducting Board meetings on Zoom. Speakers no longer need to pre-register to address items on the agenda. Per AB 361, members of the public wishing to speak must "raise their hands," quote-unquote, in the Zoom webinar platform by selecting the virtual hand icon during the presentation of that item, and may do so at any time while public comment remains open for that item. When persons are called on to speak, their microphone will be activated by district staff, and the speaker will be notified that they can now unmute themselves in order to begin speaking. The speaker will then need to unmute themselves by selecting the "Mute/Unmute" icon and state your name at the beginning of your comment. Also, members of the public, if you are joining by phone, raise your hand by dialing *9. When persons are called on to speak, their microphone will be activated by district staff, and the speaker will be notified that they can now unmute themselves in order to begin speaking. The speaker will then, on the phone, will then need to unmute themselves by dialing *6 and state your name at the beginning of your comment. Tonight, public comments are limited to 90 seconds each, and as we did last week, we'll do our best to make this new public comment system run smoothly and efficiently, and I thank you in advance for your patience. The COVID-19 Report #30 is at the regular time of 6:00 p.m. tonight. The Board will take a 10-minute break after about two hours in session, and at approximately 7:00 p.m., we will have our second public meeting, public hearing, to review four conceptual trustee maps dividing the school district into five and seven areas. The public and the Board will have an opportunity to reflect on these maps. And now, Dr. Maldonado, will you continue with your report to the Board?
Yes. I will be... Board members, good evening. I want to start my Board report today with a heavy heart and at the same moment with a hopeful heart, because I'm bringing to you news that you already know about, and I'd like to bring Kim up for this part with me. After more than 33 years with Santa Barbara Unified, our very own Steve Vizzolini is retiring. As the Director of Facilities and Modernization, Mr. Vizzolini has led our district through countless planning, construction, and modernization projects, big and small, and always doing so with his special brand of professionalism and courage. In his retirement, Mr. Vizzolini is looking forward to spending time with hobbies like gardening, doing some traveling and volunteering, and keeping up with a healthy to-do list. It is my pleasure to present him with this certificate of appreciation, which reads as Whereas Steve Vizzolini has dedicated more than 33 years of service to education in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, serving as a tireless advocate for students, families, and staff in carrying the responsibility for district facilities and maintenance teams, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Santa Barbara Unified School District and the superintendent express their sincerest gratitude and appreciation to Steve Vizzolini for his longtime commitment to the students, families, and educators of our district, and best wishes for health, prosperity, and continued success in his future. I'd like to bring up Mr. Vizzolini. We are also presenting him with something to hopefully get him started with, this new green thumb that you will be developing. We really appreciate it. I know I didn't get to work with you very long, but you are an amazing Director of Facilities, and you will be hard to replace. So I want to thank you just from the bottom of my heart. It's been incredibly exciting to work with you, my first superintendent.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that.
Would you like to say a few words?
I guess we'll do an impromptu. Good evening, Board members. It's bittersweet to be leaving right now, but the time was right. I think we're in good hands, and I appreciate the collaboration and the trust that the School Board has placed in me while I've been here and along with our amazing staff. Just wish everyone the best.
Next slide, please, for my presentation. Board members, each year, the Santa Barbara County Office of Ed also recognizes educators with their Salute to Teachers event. This year, the event will be taking place on November 6. Last year, our very own Frank Corraset of San Marcos High School was honored as the 2021 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. A few of our other teachers will also be recognized, and I wanted to mention them by name this evening. Elizabeth Caruso of Monroe Elementary School will be honored as the 2021 Santa Barbara Bowl Performing Arts Teacher of the Year. Melissa Woods of Dos Pueblos High School will also be honored as one of several 2122 distinguished mentors from throughout the county. Please join me in congratulating them for this special recognition. Our next slide. We also have a number of special observances that happen in the fall, which is one of my favorite seasons of the year. I don't know about anybody else. There's many special observances. It's a time of the year where many Latinx community members recognize El Dia de los Muertos, which translates to "The Day of the Dead." It's an annual festival celebrated in Mexico, but also by many of our families here in Santa Barbara and across the United States. It is celebrated as a day of remembrance for the friends and loved ones we've lost. The celebration is honored 31st of October to the 2nd of November. It goes without saying that in the U.S., we also have our very own celebration of Halloween this coming Sunday, October 31st. I know this is an occasion that many of our students and their families enjoy so very much, so I wish everyone a safe and fun Halloween this year. Lastly, November is Native American Heritage Month, which celebrates the vibrant cultures, traditions, and heritage while recognizing the many contributions Native Americans have made. We will be bringing you more on this at our next Board meeting in November. Actually, I said "lastly," but that was not the last part. October is also Filipino-American History Month. Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the nation and the third-largest in the group in California, after Latinos and African-Americans. This month commemorates the first recorded presence of Filipinos in our continental United States in an area known today as Morro Bay, California. We have a special performance to bring you tonight to honor this event. I'd like to bring up Beth Goldman, the Santa Barbara High teacher, who worked with these dancers on the Filipino routine they'll be performing tonight. I'm going to hope to try, I'm going to hope I say this correctly. Handango Salao, Saila, is a very popular folk dance in the Philippines. It's also said to have been originated from Mindoro, the seventh-largest island in the Philippines. This dance of light simulates fireflies at dusk and at night. Ms. Goldman, welcome. Thank you for doing this for us.
Thank you for having us.
One second. I think I need to turn on your mic.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for having us. I am Filipino myself. I grew up here. I grew up in, I grew up in the Philippines, and my family moved here in 1988. So I'm excited to present to you a, it's a very popular Philippine folk dance that stimulates fireflies in the dusk, and our students have been working hard to showcase this dance for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, and to our teacher. Thank you so much for your extra dedication, for bringing this beautiful performance for us tonight. I would like to thank you, Board members. Steve already ran out on me. I was going to have him come up and take a picture with Steve, but he's still working.
He's off.
But he is off for the day. So thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. And Steve, wherever you are, congratulations and much gratitude to you. I know on behalf of the Board that we are going to miss you so much. You've been a terrific colleague and leader. And also, wow, and thank you to Ms. Goldman and the dancers. Fantastic. We loved it so much and really appreciate your being here tonight. Are you all at Santa Barbara High School? Woo-hoo! Go Dons! Did I say that? Yeah.
We love every school, right?
We love every school. Once a Dawn, always a Dawn. Thank you so much. So before we go on to Board comments and correspondence, I would like to also congratulate one other retiree tonight, that's Effiñia Banalis. She's a Special Education Para at La Cumbre Junior High School. She retires with 28-plus years of service to our district. So Effiñia, on behalf of the Board, we wish you a wonderful retirement filled with much-deserved rest, excellent health, and plenty of good times. At this point, I will turn to Board members for comments and correspondence. And as you can see on the agenda, just a reminder that after all five Board members have reported, then we will also hear from Mr. Kelly, our student representative. So we'll begin with Ms. Munoz, please.
Thank you, President Ford. I was, I know that last time we had a presentation from the students regarding the youth makers' market, and I had an opportunity to go to their market over the weekend. It was a delight to see all the young students with their parents there and explaining, providing education about what they have and what they are selling. Great, you know, in terms of their self-esteem, their confidence. I was really, truly impressed. And I did see Aleah and Bella there, again, with their mom Cecilia, who started the market, a graduate of Santa Barbara High School. Go Dons! And, and I did want to also let you know, if you'd like to experience this, the next market is on Sunday, September 7, from 1:00 to 6:00, at our Ortega Park here in downtown Santa Barbara. And then they also have one on Sunday, November 21, from 11:00 to 2:00, at the Santa Barbara High School senior lot. And they will be having these on a regular basis. Some of the students were, gosh, in the first, very early elementary grades, Wendy, and I saw teachers there, also support, community, and such, and they were very proud to, and happy moment to be there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Simsmotin.
I don't have any comments at this time. I was going to say thank you for the presentation just before us with the dancers.
Thank you. Ms. Capps, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Steve Vizzolini for his years of service and just, again, to acknowledge what a legacy. In addition to all of the things he did for 30-some years, in the last few years, he's really ushered us into a new era of sustainability and transitioned us massively to a school system that will soon, very soon, be reliant on renewable energy with microgoods. And I've just loved working with him on that project and really appreciate the legacy that he has established here at Santa Barbara Unified.
Thanks. Thank you. And Ms. Alvarez.
A big thank you to all the teachers once again for all their work every day. Thank you to admin for the staff in service. I've heard a lot of good feedback about the learning day, so thank you for all the work. And thank you to the performers tonight.
Thank you. I also just wanted to mention a few things. As you can tell, this is a very busy month, and I have a few highlights. First of all, the annual School Wellness Summit was held virtually on October 13th, and there were a lot of amazing sessions offered on social, emotional, social climate, in-the-workplace wellness, and employee well-being, wellness policies at school, wellness committees, and local school wellness champions, as well as community partners. So it was amazing. Also, on October 20th, the Santa Barbara County Schools sponsored a workshop on conducting orderly Board meetings. And based upon some of the feedback that I heard, I feel very blessed to be working with this community, this Board, this Cabinet, and this Superintendent. And there were many helpful reminders for us that evening. And last week, Anu Vade, who is the founder of Parent Square, and I were interviewed by Blake Devine from KEYT to celebrate the 10-year anniversary and the evolution of this amazing parent communication platform, which began at Peabody. Parent Square is now used across the country and specifically in 50% of all of the school districts in California. For me, Anu was the first woman entrepreneur that I ever worked with closely, and she is just one of the most brilliant and visionary leaders that I know. Finally, just a note of appreciation to the students who weighed in on the SRD issue. I am so grateful for their passion and involvement as we go forth to ensure together that our schools are safe and healthy environments for everyone. And with that, I will ask Mr. Kelly, who is now a finalist for the position of Student Board Member of the State Board of Education next year, I'll ask Mr. Kelly to share his comments.
Yeah, just a few updates. I went on School Radio, which is hosted by George Yatsdison and Chris Yost, sorry if I mispronounced your last names, who did a great job at asking questions regarding my student Board Member position in SB Unified. And to go off what President Ford said, I'm in the top 12 for California State Student Board Member position. For those who aren't familiar with the position, the governor appoints one student to be a full-voting member of the State Board of Education every year, and I am in the top 12 for that position. And I will find out if I'm in the top three by the end of the weekend, so I'll keep you all posted. And just to clarify, that won't affect my current term. It will start next year after my term on the current Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for comments from the public about items that are not on the agenda for this evening. Each speaker is allotted 90 seconds today, and remember the new protocol and raise your hand on Zoom, members of the public, to be recognized. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Trujillo. Do we have public comments for items that are not on the agenda?
Good evening, President Ford. Members of the Board, we do have public comment on this item. You give me a second. So I will go ahead and call five names at a time so that public can get ready. When I call your name the second time, I will ask you to access, to speak. I will give you access to speak, and if you can, please unmute yourself and state your full name. Thank you. So the first five is Annika, Sheridan Rosenberg. Speaker with the last four digits of the phone number ending in 6407. Annabelle Philip, Justin Shores. And I will begin with Annika.
Hello, is this working?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So I am a student at Dos Pueblos High School, and I'm here with basically the problem that we do not have enough lunch. So to lay it out broadly, starting out, I get, I get out of class, and we have a half-hour lunch period. That's taken up by approximately three minutes to get to the lunch cart, five or so minutes to get lunch from that lunch cart. It can be up to 10 if you end up near the back of the line, three more minutes to get to where we're sitting, and approximately 10 minutes to eat lunch, and then other five minutes to get to my next class. Altogether, this is far less than, well, altogether, that's 30. And that means that there is no time to work, no time to hang out with friends. People who drive off campus cannot leave campus. This also affects teachers, where they don't have enough preparation time for class and time to eat. So many teachers are like eating as classes starting or still getting class ready as class is starting. And that's just not good, and it doesn't really work. The solutions for this whole mess that really just doesn't work socially or like, schedule-wise, are to either cut it from class time somehow. I know instructional minutes are an issue, but to push it later or to just figure it out, because that's not how it currently is.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheridan Rosenberg.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So the last Board meeting that was held on October 12th, it was, the community was basically blindsided by the Board's sudden, apparently sudden, decision not to renew the contract with the Sheriff's Department to provide a campus resource officer on the campus of San Marcos High School. And I think that I can speak for a lot of people who have been reaching out to me when I say that it was really despicable on its face. You know, let's talk about one week before that Board meeting, you had a teacher who was arrested for allegedly sexting a student at San Marcos, and then currently Zachary Warburg is standing trial for sexually abusing girls under 14 and 18. And that abuse was reported by a young female student at San Marcos High School to the safety resource officer at the high school. And what is particularly disturbing is that Fran Wagonek, at the meeting two weeks ago, revealed that she and the district, and I hope not the Board, but apparently the Board, had invited certain organizations to consult with them behind the public's back, one of them Ethnic Studies Now, which has a direct connection to another alleged sexual predator, Metapharamacus. This is disgusting and despicable.
Our next speaker is phone number ending in 6407. Can you please state your full name?
Linda Bonet.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Greetings, all. After years of commenting against the curriculum you promote, I have no delusions about what I say or anyone else says tonight that will matter or make a difference. I will, however, inform you that your lofty power-based days are numbered. It is true that the corrupt teachers' unions exhort money from most teachers in the state to fund... It is true that the corrupt teachers unions exhort money from most teachers in the state to fund their anti-child and anti-American agenda. There is a groundswell of support across the country of parents and grandparents that will take the power back from the school boards, just like this one. In fact, a week from today, there's a governor's race in Virginia, a very blue state like California, that the candidates are polling even. Why is this significant? Because the person you should be should be ahead by double digits made the mistake of admitting, I don't think parents should be telling schools what they should teach. To quote a corrupt leftist in Congress, "It's all about the Benjamins, baby." Simply put, you and the educational establishment cabal will be defunded and your power base will be removed. How? School choice. That's where the money follows the child. At that time, the educators will have to listen to the parents. The parents will be voting with their child's money. What's left, the cabal loses and the parents and kids win. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Annabelle Phillip.
Hi, my name is Kristi Phillip, actually, using my daughter's Zoom login. I'm a parent of two high school kids at Dos Pueblos High School, also a local nurse in our emergency department. Thanks so much for allowing me to speak and thank you for all you do. I'm addressing my, the concern with the school resource officers. I was informed that the one that is at San Marcos High School has been, the contract has not been renewed. And I am so concerned about the safety of the students and what that might look like if we don't have a liaison on campus for them. I, you know, being an ER nurse, I have a front row seat to the violence and the drug use and the depression and everything that goes along with that. I personally, my children feel very safe and comfortable dealing with Deputy George Hendricks at Dos Pueblos and have had nothing but good interactions. I'm kind of late to finding this out, but I do know that the students have been passing around a very important signature sheet to try to help keep him on campus. There's at least four hundred, there's at least thirty staff members. I would really urge you guys to relook at, you know, revisit that and keep these very, very important members of our, you know, community at the school, keeping the kids safe.
Fine. Thank you. Next speaker is Justin Shores.
Hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to point out a couple of things for in general comment. I could talk about the removal of the resource officer. We could talk about the multiple sex scandals under the current board, which we just begged to bring up the question, what else are you hiding? We can also talk about the poor educational outcomes that you guys have been responsible for because of your decisions with curriculum and was focusing on social justice instead of math and science and real educational qualities. But the bottom line is, we are not happy with this board. This board has done a terrible job. If anyone in town wants to run against this board, please reach out to standupsb.com. We will, we'd want to vet you and learn about you and know what you, what you bring to the table. If you are faculty, if you're a teacher, anything, we want to know, we want to get some good candidates up to face these, these people that have made horrible decisions for so many years. So please reach out to standupsb@protonmail.com. We just asked that, you know, anyone that's interested, reach out to us. We'd love to help and help fundraise for you and get these incompetent board members off the board. Thank you so much.
Our next five speakers are Samantha Kona, Dina, Audrey Neffsinger, Michael Lynch, Barbara Parme. And I'll start with Samantha Kona.
You can't leave those who created the problem in charge of coming up with the solution. So tonight, I'm speaking to parents, to students, and to teachers who are listening. If you watched Hillem Malanato's video on Friday, you have to be paying attention to her words and her actions. She says that she's keeping our children safe. Her actions show otherwise. She is taking the SROs out of the school. She has convinced the board that's a good idea, or they convinced her, I don't know which. I work at DP. The SRO has been there for ten years. He is funded by the city of Goleta. It does not cost the school district one red cent. But they want to remove him from the school. And why do they want to do that? Because they're afraid that they are going to get caught, that the kids are going to report to the SROs, and it's going to expose the things that they have been hiding. I'm a teacher there. I was there last week. There was two kids having sex outside the window. My coworker called administration, told administration this was happening. Administration did nothing. In fact, they sent the kids back to class. It happened to be the class of my coworker who saw them having sex. And she had to look at them in her class after they had done that. Administration did nothing. I don't know why my coworker even puts up with that. I would never put up with that. But there is a problem in the school district. Today, I was told by
Next speaker. Dina, can you please state your full name?
My name is Dina Schultz. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. I'm a parent of two students at Dos Pueblos High School. I've also been working for the Goleta School District, and I'm concerned that our teachers are not being given the choice whether they would like to be vaccinated or not. And I'm very shocked because the board is very pro-choice, my body, my choice. And I'm just concerned that we may be letting go approximately seventy qualified teachers and two hundred staff who care for our children. They teach our children. I view them as essential workers. I am so grateful for them that they are in person and there's learning loss. There's been child abuse that has not been reported due to the closure of schools and sports and recreational activities being canceled. I am very concerned that we could be losing up to seventy teachers. We do not have enough substitutes, and they care and they teach our children. They mandate, they report child abuse. I don't think that they need, I think they should be given the choice if they think they need the shot to protect themselves. We know if you look at VAERS, please think critically, as Mr. Ortega challenged us at Goleta Valley Junior High. Students and adults are dying from this vaccine. It is an experimental shot. If we look at VAERS, there have been seventeen thousand one hundred twenty-eight reports of death. In the past, after five fifty deaths, a product would be removed from the market. Why is this not being removed from the market? From December fourteenth of two thousand twenty to October fifteenth.
Next speaker is Audrey Neffsinger.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Audrey Neffsinger. I'm a local parent, and I'm also a career prosecutor specializing in sex crimes. I'm speaking out because I'm concerned about the safety of our children. And I'm especially concerned about the underhanded way the board acted at the last meeting to remove the SRO from San Marcos High School just a few days after teacher Jared Bradley was arrested for sexual misconduct. As a career prosecutor and a former supervisor of the Sex Crimes Division, I know it is not uncommon for children to tell SROs about sexual and other forms of abuse by parents, neighbors, other students, and teachers. Often, the SRO is the only person a child feels safe to confide such horrible personal abuse. They have no other means of reporting than the SRO on their campus. This district has a well-documented history of predator teachers, including of late Mateve Hara Machas, who lost his license, and Dan Williams. As an update and public service to all parents, they deserve to know that on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, according to the California Teacher Commission on Credentialing, the state of California stripped the former Matt Academy teacher Dan Williams of his teaching credential under Evidence Code Section four 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 two one, which is the legal section used for teachers who have committed immoral conduct. This board has failed to notify parents of this important development. What have you done to facilitate children coming forward about predators?
Next speaker is Michael Lynch.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Deputy George Hendricks. He is really an invaluable member of Dos Pueblos High School. I teach science at Dos Pueblos. And I fortunately work with a group of students who get the opportunity to interact with Deputy Hendricks more frequently than the general population. They're a higher-risk group of students who have more disciplinary action. And Deputy Hendricks has an uncanny ability to meet those students where they are and to gain their trust and to shepherd them through really challenging events in their lives, whether they happen on school campus or off of school campus. He's a trusted member of the community for a lot of our students. And I find it unnerving that there was no perception survey that came out to staff and students about how they feel about Deputy Hendricks. I have no interaction with the other SROs, so I can't speak to them. But I would just hope that before a contract wasn't renewed for such a valuable and free asset, more time would have been taken to assess that asset's value by the individuals who interact with him on a daily or weekly basis. And so I would hope that the board would take a look at that in this instance and in future instances to get more input from stakeholders.
Right. Next speaker is Maria. Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara Parme.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, board. My name is Barbara Parmet. I want to thank you all for listening to the voices of the youth coalition, who offered their testimonies about their experiences with armed officers on campus. The overwhelming evidence offered to the board showed that SROs do not prevent violence and only add to the school-to-prison pipeline for our BIPOC LGBTQ plus and students with disabilities. I also want to acknowledge that SROs are not the only issue of importance when it comes to community safety. Families need to talk about the added resources that are essential for making mental health and wellness a priority for our students. We need to pay for more counselors, psychologists, teachers, and administrators who reflect the cultural needs of our students of color. It is also absolutely necessary that the person you hire to assist Dr. Glazer in the transition at San Marcos be well-versed in restorative justice practices, as well as someone trained in mental health that understands trauma and de-escalation techniques. And finally, I would like to suggest that the district keep the youth coalition at the table while envisioning a future of school safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Maria Castner, Jason Foley, Jack Reedman, phone number ending in four two four nine, and C. Swagwick. I'll start with Maria Castner.
Good evening, board members. I have a general comment to make. I'm reading the quote behind your seat, which says, "We prepare students for a world that is yet to be created." And unfortunately, it looks more and more that it is a world that is driven by a global agenda. And I would like to alert the public that currently, for example, we have an election coming up for mayor in the city of Santa Barbara, that the county of Santa Barbara is violating our constitutional right to a private, secret ballot under Article Two, Section Seven of the California Constitution, and that the county has failed to include a secrecy scheme. If we want a government for the people, by the people, and we want to secure our elections and our elections to reflect accurately, then we need a solid voting process that is properly carried out. And that was my comment for today, for general comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jason Foley. Mr. Foley, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Jason Fallon. I'm a teacher and coach at San Marcos High School. Thank you for the opportunity for giving me this opportunity to share my experience. At some time in everyone's life, there comes a point where men must take a stand for what they believe in. For me, that time is now. Regarding the current vaccine mandate, we were told that exemptions would be considered, quote unquote, but still haven't heard back from the district. And here we are, three days away from a deadline that has been imposed on a class of people that the government itself has created. We have, we have to take the district at their word, and the word is that we will be terminated if we do not comply or if we seek exemption to their one-size-fits-all mandate. There are strong emotions, feeling of fear and anger, anxiety and uncertainty surrounding this issue. Right now, though, I choose to reflect in gratitude. I want to say thank you. Above all, I want to thank my family, my beautiful wife, and three children for allowing me to pursue a dream for the last eighteen years. So much investment, so much reward. Yes, our choices have consequences, and I hope that my children can look up to me as an example of standing up for what I believe is right and learn that taking the easy route or siding with the majority is not always the best and most fulfilling way to go. When the time comes, I will reinvent myself for those who rely on me. To all the SBUSD parents, students, and families that entrusted me over the last five and a half years with the development and growth of your students and student athletes, whether it was prior to the COVID pandemic.
Fine. Next speaker is Jack Reedman.
Hi, I'm Jack Reedman. I'm a student at Dos Pueblos, and I bike to school every day. I'm here to talk about the dangerous nature of the hill downhill from Dos Pueblos. Recently, just last Thursday, my friend was hit by a car that couldn't see him, and he couldn't see it because of the traffic situation on that road after school. Quote from him was, "We couldn't see each other, and the road lines need to be changed because there are too many people on that stretch." And there's so many people who bike to school, just like on Friday, there were thirty bikes. There were thirty people who biked in. Today, there are around thirty-five. And even on Monday, yesterday, there were two people who biked in, which is sad through the rain. But I'm here to ask for safety measures to be put in place regarding that hill. It is just too hard to gauge where people are going to try to enter the dirt parking lot a little bit down from Dos Pueblos. And it can be difficult to feel safe going down that hill because it's steep and you have to ride your brakes the whole way down to be able to see people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, phone number ending in four two four nine. Please state your full name. You can please unmute yourself.
Hello?
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 Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Yeah, hi, this is Dr. Mike Phil. I'm a local emergency room physician. And I want to speak as a professional and also as a father of fifteen-year-olds in the school system here. In terms of these mandates, and I anticipate you're going to mandate for students. In all this COVID, I've been working full-time. I've seen two sick twenty-year-olds. They did fine. I haven't seen any kids that have had any significant illness from COVID. So whenever you do a medical procedure, consider risk versus benefit. I don't think there's any benefit for children, teenagers, to get these COVID shots. And there's significant risk, so I'm very much against these mandates, and I hope that you'll rule against them. In terms of my fifteen-year-olds in the school system, I've taken them out. He's in charter school now. And I'm not going to put them back, you know, with testing of the unvaccinated. I've seen many people at work that have had the vax and they have COVID. So you're testing unvaccinated, and I think that's discrimination. Well, I don't think it. I know it's discrimination, so. Yeah, I'm very much against it, so. Yeah, I'm very much against it, so.
Thank you very much. As it is 6:20, Board members, I'm going to now move to the COVID-19 report, and we will pause public comments. And if, after the, the report, there are other public comments about non-agenda items, we will return to that. So with this, I will turn it over to Dr. Wagonick, please.
Ross, we're ready to go? Good evening. It's on. Good evening, Dr. Maldonado, President Ford, and school board members. I am here with COVID Board Report Number 30. So key factors, next slide, please. So the key factors that we always consider and we stand firm with is the real research and the understanding. We look to the CDC, the CDPH, and our local public health for oversight and support in our decision-making. We do have a comprehensive testing program, and I'll be giving you some details about changes to that in just a moment. As, as you know, this is a school district that supports vaccinations, and we continue to hold the follow-up vaccine clinics in our schools. And then we closely watch community transmission. These key factors are essential to the decision-making that we engage in on a regular basis. Next slide, please. So I want to bring to you the County Public Health Report. These are numbers from October 22nd, last Friday. You look there to the far right, you see the continued descent of Delta variant cases in our county. And as of last Friday, we were at just about 10 cases per 100,000. We were at 9.9 cases. And I went back and I looked, and the last time that we were at that level was July 17th. And I think about where my mindset was in July, on July 17th, and I thought, okay, it's looking good to reopen school. So right on time, they said the peak of Delta would be sometime in late September, early October. It appears that was the case. And then here we go into November. However, we need to remain diligent. So next slide. And that goes to our mitigation efforts. And of course, one of the main mitigation efforts is vaccination. So then, watching the rate of vaccination for student-age groups, the 12- to 15 group has hit, just exceeded 50% in the county being fully vaccinated. And we have over 60% who are vaccinated, fully or partially vaccinated. Then when you look at the 16- to 29-year-old rate, obviously, it is higher. Next slide, Mr. Alves. So each Friday, we've begun updating our district dashboard, which we'll look at in a moment, but want to bring you some comprehensive numbers. So in terms of testing consent, you can see that our testing consent was around 76% two weeks ago. It's now up to pushing 85% as of last Thursday. We are still working to get that testing consent from another 500-plus families. In terms of all of our student testing results, that's both surveillance and symptomatic testing. We have had 15 positive tests that we have conducted in our schools, of the tests in our schools, which exceed 6,000. Only 15 of those were positive, one-half of 1%, which is a rate much lower than the county positivity rate. In terms of secondary students, we continue to work on the vaccination status as of last Thursday. For all secondary schools, it was approximately 34%. I can report that we are starting to see increased numbers. And but we're still awaiting response from the majority of students. Our regular employees' vaccination status, we're at 92% fully vaccinated. And I know that that number has increased since last Thursday as well. We have another 39 individuals with their vaccinations in progress. 90 individuals are requesting exemptions or deferrals. And then we are awaiting response still from seven employees. Next slide, please. So we have our, our three headlines to bring to you tonight. The first is that the CDC has expanded eligibility for the COVID-19 booster shots. Now, I signed up for mine. I go in at 5:45 on Thursday to get the Pfizer. And but today, or actually, last Thursday, the Director of the CDC, Dr. Walensky, endorsed the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices and Recommendations for Booster Shots of the COVID-19 Vaccines for Certain Populations. The Food and Drug Administration's and the CDC recommend forward steps in order to stay ahead of the virus and keep Americans safe. So as we see the decline, it's important that individuals get the booster shots so we can keep the virus at bay. For individuals who receive the Pfizer, BioNTech, or Moderna COVID-19 vaccine, the following groups are eligible for a booster shot at six months or more after their initial series. Those who are 65 and older, those who are 18 and older who live in long-term care settings, those ages 18 and older who have underlying medical conditions, and those 18 and older who work or live in high-risk settings. And educators are considered to work in high-risk settings, and therefore educators are now eligible for the booster vaccine. And then they came out and said that of the 15 million people who got the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID vaccine, booster shots are recommended for those who are 18 and older if you were vaccinated two or more months ago. And so and that's because of the efficacy of the Johnson &amp; Johnson being lower than Moderna or Pfizer. Our second headline is that the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID vaccine appears to be more than 90% effective in kids ages 5 to 11. So the smaller dose of the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine did clear its first regulatory hurdle today for use in young children after a Food and Drug Administration Advisory Committee voted to recommend it for emergency authorization for those ages 5 to 11. That recommendation will now go to the FDA, which is expected to make a final ruling in the next week. If authorized, the move would make nearly the entire U.S. population eligible for a COVID vaccine, with only children under age four not eligible. And then finally, the Delta Plus variant has been very active in Great Britain, specifically over the last few months. U.S. health officials have been keeping a close eye on that Delta Plus variant. And some scientists say that this may be more contagious than the already highly transmissible Delta variant. However, research is still out on that. Formerly known as AY.4.2, Delta Plus includes two new mutations. And these mutations can be found in other COVID variants. So it's really, at this point, unclear how dramatically those changes have affected the virus. However, we do know that it is now present in five states in the United States. Next slide. So as I said earlier, we update the dashboard every Friday with our data as of 3:00 PM on Thursday. So during that last week, we had 12 students who were positive cases on campus and zero staff members who were positive cases. We have had a total of 100 students positive on campus and 25 staff members. And as I said earlier, 92% of our staff are now fully vaccinated. Next slide. So we are making an adjustment to our student testing protocols. The, the options in the graphic on the left side of this slide, they reflect the lessons that were learned last year in California and nationwide regarding how schools use testing to effectively support safe and successful return to school in person. It's not a comprehensive list of our testing options, but it really, the state of California laid it out as a good model for presenting strategies that seem to be the most useful and feasible in schools. So schools can use one of multiple testing options at any time. Schools may also choose to use a different combination of one or more of the testing options as situations change and the school year progresses. Up to this point in the school year, we've utilized a combination of symptomatic testing and surveillance or screening testing in elementary schools and with unvaxxed employees. We've used symptomatic testing solely in our secondary schools. Because of improving trends in our district and the community, we'll be shifting to a combination of symptomatic, also known as diagnostic testing, and random testing on November 8th. All schools will conduct random testing of 10% or more of their unvaccinated students every two weeks. Our current rate of weekly cases per 100,000 is well below the county rate, and therefore we trust that our other mitigation measures, along with the random and symptomatic testing, will continue to keep COVID under control in our schools. The reason, folks have asked, why only unvaccinated students? Why only unvaccinated individuals? The, again, going back to our original slide where we follow the guidance of, of state and federal agencies, the CDC recommends that only unvaccinated individuals participate in, in screening or random testing. We reserve the right to resume surveillance testing in any school in which an outbreak occurs, and we will continuously monitor COVID within our schools and community to ensure that we're utilizing the testing practices needed to keep our kids in school. That was our commitment when we brought students back to school, was to keep kids in school. We believe that our swish-cheese mitigation efforts have been, for the most part, successful. We're not, you know, we certainly don't by any means celebrate the 100 students and 25 staff members who have had positive caifics on campus and the ones who have not been positive on campus. However, we feel like our efforts have been successful, and we're going to continue to follow the guidelines of the experts at the state and federal level. Next slide, please. That is my last slide. I was so eager to tell you more. Anyway, at this time, I will turn it over for discussion or questions.
Thank you so much. As a reminder to everyone, this is a report item only, and no action will be taken by the board tonight. Members of the public, it is now time for public comment on this report. Please use your Zoom icon to raise your hands. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments related to the COVID-19 report?
Thank you, President Ford. Yes, we do have public comment on this item. And again, I will call five names at a time. Maria Kastner, Mitch Denny, Tom Thomas, Sharon Jagodka, Brian Campbell. I will start with Maria Kastner.
Good evening again, Board members. I would like to point out some statements of Dr. Ansor during the board meeting, the County Supervisor Board meeting of October 5th. Dr. Ansor is actually making claims about natural immunity, and I quote, "He says natural immunity studies are controversial, and the jury isn't out." In the same meeting, he makes another statement, and I quote, "The vaccine is a blockbuster, and it's working really well." Actually, there are 81 studies that have scientific studies that show that natural immunity trumps vaccine efficacy. And I'm going to send the Santa Barbara Unified School District all those studies. And here's another quote from Dr. Ansor, and I'm very concerned because I find this really something propaganda. And I quote, "I have been listening to public comment week after week, and I'd really like to state again today for the record, the comments that were shaped ever again today, they represent the personal opinions of the public speaker. In no way are they substantiated by science that needs to be understood as somebody repeats a false claim again and again and again. The false claim does not become reality, and I'm concerned that the constant public repetitions of falsehoods and offset quantitative claims may actually influence or lead the audience insecure and uncertain with actual facts that is to concern to me." Well, it's a concern to me that Dr. Ansor is basically making claims about natural immunity that are not substantiated by science. Thank you very much.
Fine. Next speaker is Mitch Denny.
Mitch Denny, New Woodshop teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. I would like to address not the vaccine mandate itself, but the atrocious treatment of unvaccinated teachers and staff in implementing said mandate. It's truly been a month-long nightmare for me and my wife, who is herself a teacher at Franklin. In the first communication sent out by John Becky on September 24th, we were informed that effective immediately, all employees must get a first dose by October 1st, and that failure to do so could result in termination. In short, we could be unemployed parents of a five-month-old baby in one week. Three days before that deadline, Ms. Maldonado affirmed that there was confusion while accepting no responsibility for it. She laid out a new timeline whereby full implementation would happen November 2nd. And here we are, just one week away from the new deadline, and we still do not have clear answers. Multiple visits to HR last week confirmed the worst. There were no answers forthcoming because you don't have any. Worst of all, from more than one source, quote, "We're building the plane while we fly it." I say to that, "How dare you?" Not on my behalf, but on behalf of the many teachers and staff I've been fortunate to meet this last month, who represent decades upon decades of dedicated service to the children of our community. You couldn't have posed a hypothetical and made sure you had answers before placing us all on the gallows. In the end, I do believe that once the plane is flying lopsidedly, I won't be on it. I'm sorry for all my students, but mostly for my kids who struggle with every other class but found refuge in the woodshop. I hope for their sake that a suitable replacement is found who is vaccinated against a disease that represents almost...
Next speaker is Tom Thomas.
So just like our governor, who's a total hypocrite, who tells people not to have parties, but he attends parties, so is our superintendent. She has 300 people last week in the auditorium, and she's not wearing a mask. Why is that okay? Why is that okay for her not to wear a mask? But we all have to wear a mask in the... But we all have to wear a mask in the church, outside the school board, and we're not allowed inside because it's dangerous. But she can sit in an auditorium with no mask and talk to us. Please answer me that question.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sharon Jagodka.
Hi, I first wanted to explain separation of church and state. The meaning is that government should remain neutral toward all religion and not officially recognize or favor any one religion. Over the last several months, many parents have been voicing their opinions loud and clear. Many have been kind, patient, critical, and harsh. Some of you have said you wish it wasn't like this. Why do you suppose this is? We are the parents and maybe the minority because we live in a part of this country, Santa Barbara, that has become extremely liberal. We, the parents, have not been listened to and our questions are never answered. We, the parents, have been ordained by God to do what is best for our kids. God has given us each and every one of us on this planet a free will. God has never forced us to do something we don't want to do. That is the beauty of God, loving and kind. You all are like dictators and have already forced many teachers and staff to get vaccinated for fear of losing their livelihoods. And many well-loved and admired staff and teachers are being forced to lose their jobs because they choose to not get vaccinated. You have some very serious decisions to make. The most serious being to vaccinate our young, vulnerable children. I don't need to quote studies because we have informed you of these. I hope you have read the serious adverse reactions to this not-approved experimental vaccine. There could and will be serious consequences if you were to mandate this vaccine. Blood could be on your hands. When our forefathers had made decisions to make, they always saw God in prayer for wisdom because all wisdom is from God. There have been many people praying for you all. My hope is that you have seeked God and answers from...
Next speaker is Brian Campbell.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. So this is from the FDA meeting today regarding 511-year-olds. They made numerous statements such as Pfizer and FDA experts are unable to say the vaccine can prevent the transmission of COVID. They said, "We simply don't know what the side effects are going to be." They also said, "We don't know how safe the vaccine is until we start to use it." They admitted they're aware of the side effects. Heart inflammation, myocarditis, pericarditis, death has occurred more than expected among the youth. That's not a pleasant surprise. So in fact, the CDC and Dr. Fauci stated that vaccinations do not prevent the spread of COVID. Vaccinations treat symptoms much like Nyquil does, so you don't get as sick. So why is the school not testing the vaccinated people? Because they are getting sick and passing along. CDC and Fauci openly admit that vaccinated people get COVID and spread a full viral load infecting others. In fact, we got COVID from a fully vaccinated person. They said vaccinated people typically don't show symptoms. Vaccinated people are asymptomatic spreaders. Per Dr. Fauci, asymptomatic spreaders are the number one cause to spreading COVID. That is why there are mask mandates to prevent the spreading, not because they're fashionable. But yet, they will not test the vaccinated people even though they're getting people sick. You know, there are 24 million children between the age of 5 to 11. Per CDC, Dr. Hovers, there have only been 90...
Thank you. Our next five speakers are C. Swagik, Zoe Guess, Claudia Henry, Jason Foley, and Chadwick. I will start with C. Swagwick. Please state your full name, please.
Hello, this is Caleb Chadwick. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I have had the privilege of being the shop teacher at San Barbara High School for the past nine years. In that time, it has been a joy and it has been heartache and everything in between. The shop is an amazing place for me because of the students that walk in there every day. Those students walk into a place where respect is required for themselves and for each other, where honor is required for themselves and for each other, where consideration is required for themselves and for each other. I wish that the school board had that same standard. My students have taught me so much and they have taught me, they have changed who I am. I love being in my classroom with them. School Board, you also taught me so much. The way you have made decisions has shaped who I am as a teacher. You've showed me exactly what not to do for my students. You speak of equity, but you do not extend it. You speak of caring, but you do not express it. Your actions are very different than what you preach. I see two paths for you, District. Either do what you say and fire me or apologize and change your ways and let's start over.
Next speaker is Zoe Guess.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks for listening and I want to especially thank Laura for listening and for sharing a little glimpse of your heart at the meeting on the 12th of October, where you acknowledged the adverse effects from the COVID shot in 12- to 17-year-olds, particularly the incidence of myocarditis in boys. Now let me speak again to that heart, which you surely expressed empathy from, and ask you if you, as the mama bear that you claim to be, really feel comfortable experimenting with this shot on your son, Oscar, and all of the other 5- to 11-year-olds in our blessed community. I'm calling attention to you and the school board and the parents to question their morals and ethics on behalf of the children, who according to the CDC, are at a 0.0025% risk of fatality to COVID, while a much greater risk of an adverse reaction. Where there is risk, there must be choice. God bless you and your conscience. Thank you.
Next speaker is Claudia Henry.
Hello, I'm Claudia Henry from Galita. I have children in public school and I privately teach. I want to register for many parents who have personally expressed this to me, our deep unease that this school board moved too fast to mandate experimental vaccinations for teachers and staff. And it seems set to move too fast to mandate experimental vaccinations on our children. There is a health risk to getting an experimental COVID vaccine and right now, it's still experimental. Comorinati is the only FDA-approved product and yet it is not locally available. So the vaccines that are now being given locally are still the emergency use authorized version, i.e. experimental. It does not instill trust that the school board set a deadline to mandate an mRNA vaccine prior to its being an approved drug. In fact, it seems aggressive and people feel bullied and pressured into an experiment and scared to lose their jobs and their teachers. In addition, this mRNA technology simply doesn't have long-term testing. I think that's one thing we can all agree on. And therefore, no long-term safety track record exists. If you start reading the collection of residents on next door, you'll read about a variety of adverse reactions in our own area. Admittedly, many next-door neighbors accept these reactions and injuries as taking one for the team. But can we really demand children take one for the team or our teachers?
Next speaker is Jason Colley.
Yes, hello, thank you. I just wanted to finish my comment regarding COVID-19 and some people I wanted to continue to thank. To all the fine SBUSD parents, students, and families that entrusted me over the last five and a half years with the development and growth of your students and student athletes, whether it was prior to the COVID pandemic and we were trying to help young people strive for a lifetime of physical fitness and improve, or improve on a daily basis, or during the initial stages of the pandemic, when you trusted our staff of dedicated individuals, when folks were isolated, kids were locked down, and people were in fear, we provided a much-needed outlet for students and athletes to feel as though they were a part of something, gave them something greater than themselves to work toward. And we did it in a way that struck a reasonable balance between safety and freedom. There was no vaccine and we played football during a time when case rates were higher than if we were to have played during our normal season. No one was sent to the hospital, no one died. We communicated with parents, administration, and staff with transparency and forthrightness, all while receiving very little or conflicting information from above. And as more and more information came out about the limited risk posed to young, healthy people, we felt confident that perhaps the pandemic of fear had been put in the rearview mirror. Thank you to the coaches, teachers, and admin that I've worked with over the years. You have influenced me and shaped my perspective on life and I will never forget the work we have done together. I also have one final comment about your random testing program. It's anything but random. It's targeted, it's tar...
Next speaker is Chadwick. Chadwick, can you please state your full name?
My name's Erin Chadwick. Okay, so the past few weeks, my desire was to help you, the board, understand more about the other side of this vaccine and the people that it's hurt. Maybe a side that you've been lucky enough to not have been personally impacted by, but nonetheless, you are a public servant and I wanted to extend you the opportunity to serve and maybe gain some empathy and insight along the way. I shared with you guys stories of five friends in my life in our small town that have suffered immensely from their COVID vaccine. I invited each one of you to join me and bring them a meal. I offered to drive. I did not hear back from a single one of you, except for Kate Ford, who responded by saying she appreciated my perspective but declined to help. In contrast to you, our local board, I did hear back from Michelle DeWort, who holds a position on the Santa Barbara County Board, who responded like I would hope every public servant would have. Her response to me read, "Hello, Erin. Thank you for your email and for keeping us updated on the people in our community who need our support. Would you please extend my thoughts and support for Leah and Amber and thank them for sharing their stories to help others? I appreciate the work done by you and the community to assist the families that have found themselves in this situation that is not their fault and have no recourse of action nor protective legislation. I am happy to contribute to all three links you provided. Please keep me updated. Take care, Michelle DeWort." Her display of empathy is so life-giving, it's so healing. It's what we need from our public servants.
The next five speakers are Justin Shores, Sarah Anderson, phone number ending in 3355, Santa Barbara High student, and phone number ending in 8812. I will start with Justin Shores.
Thank you so much. Just want to continue dissent against the mandates and any mandates that you have coming forward as well. I know you may not have it in your power right now, but you do need to start looking at the consequences of these before they go too much further. The, the political side of this needs to stop. We could tell this is all coming from, from the federal government. It's getting pushed down from the top. Every one of you that is party-based is gleefully doing what you're told and it's, it's wrong. So if anyone out there is willing to run against these board members, please, please step up. We're going to support you. We need better leaders and these, these are not it. They're, they've failed us so many ways. They failed in our educations. Now they're failing with our children's mental and physical health. They're, they're failing everywhere. They need to be held accountable in so many ways. So we, we, anything you have, if you know anything corruption-wise, if you, if you want to run, we want these ladies out. So we're going to do everything we can, so.
Next speaker is Sarah Anderson.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Maldonado and board, you say what you're doing is for the students. I don't see one thing you are doing is for the students. You are taking away their precious teachers. Is that for the kids? You are taking away the sheriff deputies in the high school campuses. What is your plan there to keep our kids, teachers, and staff safe? You and the board about to mandate this kid vaccine that is known and proven not to be effective? How is that for the students? There will be a lot of students who will be not welcomed at your schools because of you. The last board meeting, the student representative spoke about student mental health. There will be a lot of students with mental health issues because of what you and what you are doing to our schools. We know for a fact that the COVID vaccine does not stop the spread of COVID. So what is the point of getting it? When they have perfected it, then maybe it will be worth giving it to our kids. But that requires time and data. Our schools have not had an outbreak like predicted. Don't you take that into consideration? All it seems you take into consideration is the dollar sign for wounding this vaccine. And if the kids and staff get it, you will get a bonus amount of money. How is that caring for our students? Ms. Maldonado and the board, you have made many, many parents very angry with you and it's time to stop. Have some compassion for the people you are working for and the people of Santa Barbara. Please have some compassion.
I am... Next speaker, last four digits of the phone number, 3355. Please state your full name. If you can, please unmute yourself. Speaker 3355, can you unmute yourself? If no, we will go to the next speaker.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Good, thanks. Hi, I want to weigh in. My name is Jeff Burt and I'd like to let you guys know that I am tremendously well-researched. I have tried to call into the school board and I've talked to as many people as I possibly can, offering as much information. It is scientific, it comes from the CDC, it comes from the World Health Organization, it comes from Pfizer, it comes from Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. I am very concerned that I have not been met with openness and a willingness to hear what I am trying to share with you guys. There are plenty of concerns and there is plenty of science that indicates that a lot of this stuff that we're talking about doing does not work. I do know the mask studies that the CDC has referenced as the emerging science indicating any kind of benefit from masks and it is absolutely flawed and ridiculously unsupported so-called science. We're talking about 100 basis point difference with masks coming out of the study from Stanford and Yale over in Bangladesh in which 300,000, over 300,000 participants demonstrated a difference, 7.62% versus 8.62%. Those who wore masks and tested positive for COVID by serology tests versus 8.62, who did not wear masks, per the study observational researchers.
Next speaker is SBHS student. If you can, please state your full name.
We are multiple students. Cal, Jack...
Taylor and Isabella.
Hi, I'm Jack. I'm a senior at Santa Barbara High School. I have Chadwick as a woodshop teacher. I just want to say that if you fire Chadwick, there's going to be a lot of upset students. There are many unvaccinated and vaccinated students who do not support mandates. Many of the vaccinated students who do not want to be forced to get a booster, especially every six months. This issue is not the vaccinated against the unvaccinated. It's an issue of using common sense. The CDC admits that the vaccines do not stop transmission. That takes away any argument for forcing others to be injected. The science proves that a recovered case of COVID has a stronger and more long-lasting immunity than any shot. Common sense tells anyone that if they're natural immunity, they have the best immunity and they don't need to get, take the risk of getting a shot which contains experimental technology. They refuse to, they refuse to accept natural immunity and the forcing of people to take something that scientifically does not protect others is a very suspicious course of action. Hello, my name is Cal. I'm a junior at Santa Barbara High School and Chadwick has been my favorite teacher. He's always helping me and other students and he's connecting with students, not just teaching us. And I just want to say that Chadwick teaches more about what we might do in our, in the real world than any other teacher at the school.
Thank you.
Next speaker with phone number ending in 8828812. Please state your full name. If you can unmute yourself, please. If you can unmute yourself, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your full name.
Yes, hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your full name.
This is Sarah Daniel.
Go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'd like to make three points to share on anti-mandate. First, why would you give a vaccine to a child if it is only 90% effective? A child has a 99.999% recovery rate if they get COVID. It is way safer for a child to get COVID than to get the vaccine. Also, children are 100 times more likely to die from getting the COVID vaccine than from getting COVID. Only 50% of the spike protein stays at the injection site. Much of the rest settles on the ovaries. This vaccine can ruin a girl's chances of having healthy pregnancies in the future. If you go to theguardian.com, there is a study that shows that boys are more at risk from the Pfizer jab side effects than COVID. Go ahead and look it up. Please protect the children and stop the mandate. Thank you.
Next speaker, Celia Lamir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Celia Campbell-Lamir, and I'm addressing, as Wendy would say, the sisters of the board. I'm speaking on behalf of my friends in the town that we live in, Erin and I, and just wanted to let you know about the adverse effects of this mandate, of the vaccine. It works well in some, but in others, our friends, it doesn't. And I know that she's pointed out several times to come to our area to see our friends. And I really do wish that you would do that, to be perfectly honest. And you can look into the eyes of the females who have been affected by this. Wendy, I know that you are totally blessed with your voice from our Lord. Why don't you come and sing Amazing Grace? They would totally love that. I urge you, please, take the time to see what this vaccine actually does to certain people. And I just want to say, from a place of love, because I know God loves, but I urge you, please, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Next speakers are Kristen King, Brian Anderson, and phone number ending in 7100. Oh, sorry, Kristen King.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kristen King. I'm a new parent to this district. My daughter was in private school, is now a freshman at DP. I just want to share an experience that we had. We've had lots of experiences, but she's on the volleyball team. She's a freshman, and one of the girls on her team tested positive for COVID. She happened to also be vaccinated, but it was the unvaccinated girls who were treated with complete, like an outcast. They were the ones that were made an example. I was told that the protocol was that she would need to test twice, but yet she could still go to school. It's called hybrid quarantine. And to me, as a parent who's thinking through logically, that makes absolutely no sense. She had the ability to still go to school, wear a mask, test, but yet she couldn't practice, she couldn't play in games, and she couldn't go to the outdoor football game. Thankfully, day nine was homecoming, and she was able to go to homecoming, which is great. However, I don't like the way those students were treated. They were treated differently than the students who are vaccinated, who had complete freedom. To me, that's not right.
Fine. Next speaker is Brian Anderson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Can you turn your sound off? You have an echo.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a teacher of 20 years. My wife and I have a family with three young kids. My livelihood is being challenged with the vaccine mandate. This is my freedom to choose for myself and again for my kids. We're all here because we love our kids, both our own and our students. We love them differently, just like parents.
Hello, Mr. Anderson, I think we lost steer. Signal, are you there? Hello? We're going to go ahead and go to the next speaker. Phone number ending in 7100. Can you please state your full name?
Hola, me pueden escuchar?
Hola, me pueden escuchar? Puede hablar, hablar.
Okay. Yo tengo dos hijos y estoy completamente en desacuerdo con lo que ustedes, la Mesa Directiva de Santa Barbara, quieren hacer y lo que están haciendo con los maestros. En poco tiempo van a forzar la vacuna en menores de edad, y ustedes lo van a enforzar. Están muy pero muy mal, y ese mensaje que sigue es para todos los padres latinos. Es hora de luchar por nuestros derechos y los derechos de nuestros hijos. Si queremos que ellos tengan un mejor futuro, es hora de hablar y de actuar, no de quedarnos callados. Hay que llenarnos de valor y parar esta locura. Si quieren informarse, llamenme a mi teléfono, 805-252-7100. Juntos todos lo podemos parar. Disculpenos, ¿nos puede decir su nombre? Yasmin Robledo-Bautista.
Gracias. President for, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Board members, we now go to questions that you may have or comments that you have for Dr. Wagnit on the COVID-19 report. We'll turn to Ms. Munoz, do you have any questions or comments?
None at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simms-Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I just have one clarification on the random testing, Dr. Wagnit. So if our schools were to have an outbreak, do you go back to the more stricter testing or will you remain with the random?
If we were to, exactly, if we were to have an outbreak that was substantiated by Santa Barbara County Public Health, or if we were in another situation where we really wanted to closely monitor, also if rates went up again. So we're just reserving that right to use surveillance tests. And that's really, you know, throughout COVID, we don't know when this is going to end. So we'll just play it by how the cases are in the community and in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kaps. Thank you. Ms. Elvis?
One quick comment. First of all, thank you for all the information and for keeping up to date. I know that part of the practice is to make sure that we have the latest information and that we make changes as needed. So I truly appreciate your doing that. And also, the testing, the testing protocol that has been changed from before, if I understand you correctly, you say that we changed that protocol because the rates are going down? Or can you just refresh my memory why we changed that protocol?
There was a discussion in cabinet about our current rates within the schools. And as I reported, you know, the county rate is still right around 10 for 100,000, but we are at less than 2 for 100,000 weekly in our district.
Thank you. And also, Dr. Maldonado, do I understand correctly that you participate on, is it a weekly meeting with the county superintendents and also with the Department of Health, so that we are sure that we are keeping up to date? Is that weekly, or remind me, how often is that?
Yes, we meet with the county public health every Tuesday, along with all superintendents in the county.
Thank you. Thank you, I have no other comments. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
No comments at this time, thank you.
Thanks. I just have one question. Again, I wonder, you mentioned testing options, so I guess we're all pretty interested in the testing process. And you mentioned that we do symptomatic and screening. And now it'll be random screening. Are there, what are the other testing options that are out there that have been offered?
One is pooled testing, and in pooled testing, you take a group of students and you pool, literally pool all of the results. So you don't get the results for each individual student. You get the, you find out whether there are cases in that group. If there are positive cases, then you have to go back through and test every single student in that pool. So that's a way for schools to kind of monitor the presence of COVID in their schools without looking at individual students.
And when you mention these testing options, they are offered by the CDC or by the California Public Health?
Well, this is CDPH, the California Department of Public Health. It's, and that is the testing protocol that we follow. They do not mandate to us which protocols we follow, but that rather they give guidelines of how the testing should be conducted.
Great. I have no further questions. Thank you again for sharing as much information as you have, and I thank the board for your attention. With that, given the fact that it is 7:10, I'd like to move forward on the second public hearing on the MAP trustee area scenarios presented by Cooperative Strategies. And at this time, I believe that Scott Newell will first present the four maps as modified by public and board feedback over the past couple of weeks. And those maps divide the district into five or into seven trustee areas. Then we'll receive any public comment that we have on the hearing and on the maps, and followed by input from board members after that. Scott?
You guys ready for me? Sorry, we're switching to a panelist.
Yes, we are ready.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. All right, let's go ahead and flip to the next slide there. So just briefly, I want to make sure, last time I heard, maybe I had some volume issues there. Can you hear me okay tonight?
We hear you fine.
Great. All right, so just to keep you up to speed on where we're at in this process right now. Since the last time we met, we hosted two community meetings, one on the 14th of October and one on the 21st of October. We're coming to you tonight with four scenarios to review, one of which is unchanged, and the other three are going to be new to you, and we'll talk about what we have changed in those. After tonight's meeting, getting any feedback we have and any changes that we want to make, we will have another community meeting, and then another meeting with you guys, followed by one more community meeting, and then a fourth meeting where hopefully you will adopt a scenario. And then, as we mentioned during the January, February timeline, we go to the County Committee on School District Organization to hopefully adopt a new voting scenario for y'all. Next slide, please. So quickly again, just to review for you what the major considerations are with this process from going from an at-large district to a trustee voting area district. The top two on here are musts. So each area should contain nearly equal number of inhabitants. Second one there should be drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which identifies protected classes. Beyond that, we have other considerations to look at as we're moving scenarios around. Want to have compact and contiguous as much as possible. And there was a question at the last meeting about that, and hoping that Mr. Price can talk a little bit about that tonight. Must respect communities of interest as much as possible. So those can be neighborhoods, other communities that are identified, towns, cities, things like that. Man-made and natural geographic features, major roads, thoroughfares, mountains, things of that nature. Respect incumbency if possible, and then other local considerations, which was addressed last time, trying to have these trustee areas as much as possible have some representation within Santa Barbara Unified. So that was one of the comments that was made last time. Next slide. Okay, so we did present these last time. They are on the website, just like all the maps are. This is just a general overview of your census data as we move forward here. So you can see from the 2020 census data, right around 190.5 residents. Those that are voting age are over, about 160.5. And then you can see, as you look down the spread of your demographics. Next slide. The other piece that we look at here is your citizen voting age population estimates. And so this is taken from the 2015 to 2019 citizen voting age estimates here. As you can see, your major protected class with your Hispanic and Latinos is about 22.2% of your population. And then as we scroll down, you can kind of see how everything is made up. Next slide, please. And right here is just a brief comparison from the last census in 2010 to our current census in 2020. And as you can see, you've gained some population. And also, you can see just how your demographics have changed over that 10-year period. Okay, go two slides down to our first scenario. Okay. And again, just a little bit of weight finding here. We did try to make the icons of the schools bigger this time, so that you can see them on there. The blue little flags are the elementary schools. The green are the junior highs, the red are the high schools, and then the purplish ones are your alternative schools. When we look at this here, just for colors, trustee voting area number one is in yellow. Number two is in green. Number three is in the salmon orange's color. Number four is blue, and number five is purple. And so this was the one scenario we didn't change. And if you want to go to the next slide here, the reason that we didn't change this one, just as a baseline. Next slide, please. Thank you. This doesn't have the lowest variance. And so as we mentioned, with those top two considerations there, each area should have an equal number of inhabitants, and it should be drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which is identifying protected classes. And in this case, protected class is your, or just demographic groups, minority groups. This one here had the lowest variance at 2.4. When you look at that top line, you can see, sorry, if we go back to the top, an ideal size with a five-area district is 38,119. So you can see that from a population standpoint, these are all very close to that. And you can see from a spread of your protected classes there, they all are pretty close to balanced. So that was the main reason for keeping this one here. Go to the next scenario, please. So this slide and for future ones, we just tried to, for you guys, have this data, just any changes that were made. And so as I mentioned here, no changes, and it was again because it was our lowest variance. Next scenario. Okay, so for this one here, one of the comments that was made last time is that you really wanted to have as many of the areas as possible having some representation within Santa Barbara Unified. And just as a point of clarification again, these are blown, you know, zoomed-in maps. And so in trustee area number one, everything that goes to the east is in the yellow. So that encompasses Cold Springs and, oh, there we go, and Montecito. So and then everything to the left in the purple is the rest of Bolivian. So in this case here, some of the key changes we've made from the last time to try to get a little bit more representation within Santa Barbara Unified. We took trustee area number one, and we adjusted that down. that down just to take in more population from downtown Santa Barbara. Trustee area number two was stretched to the west, the boundary between Hope and Santa Barbara Unified. Number three was flattened and stretched over to cover parts of La Lita, Hope, and Santa Barbara, and includes Santa Barbara Community Academy. Number four was stretched to grab parts of Santa Barbara Yosti proper, and also includes parts of San Marcos High School and its boundary. And number five was adjusted so it serves the La Lita schools. If you want to go to the numbers on this one. So here, you can see we still have a very low variance, which is great, at 3.6%. And one of the things, again, that we look at right here, and probably since you don't have it in front of you, if you go back, and you don't have to go back on the slide, but if you go back to our, our citizen voting age population estimates, if you look at our highest protected class, which is our Hispanic and Latino group, it's at 22.2% of the population. So under this scenario right here, by making these revisions, you can see that under the CVAP, which is the darker gray columns, that we are pretty well balanced and, and pretty well represented in those categories there. And then if you look at the spread of all the other demographics there, it's pretty well balanced. So those were some of the changes there. I think I'll also note that, you know, within the scenario compared to the first scenario, we do have four of the trustee areas represented within Santa Barbara Unified. Next slide, just kind of goes over again those key changes. So I'll give you just a moment to look at those. And again, you'll have this information. But as I mentioned with this, those did keep us at a variance of 3.6 and did make some of those revisions that I think were reflected in, in that map. All right. If we want to go to number three, please. Okay. So in this scenario here, some of the revisions that we made for trustee area number one, which is in the yellow, from the map you just saw that was unchanged. Number two was also unchanged. Now, number three, which in this case here is the salmon color, the bigger portion there, was adjusted to cover the inland side of Highway 101. Trustee area number four, which is the blue, was adjusted to cover the coastal side of Highway 101 and stretched westward to cover parts of Santa Barbara Yosti and serve Santa Barbara, excuse me, San Marcos High School and Adams Elementary. And then number five was adjusted to include all of La Lita schools. So when we look at the numbers with this, pretty similar variance. You can see though that from your spread of your, your CVAP, you do have some areas now that are not quite as balanced as the previous scenario, but it does run some different geographic lines in the district. Next slide again, just reiterates those key changes. Okay. And then number four, we were asked to create a scenario that had a seven trustee area district. And so again, having to meet the two base criterias of having an equal number of inhabitants, and then also, you know, draw to comply with your protected classes, we put together something that would fit those two parameters as best as we could first and foremost. And so, you know, kind of take a look here, you can see really what it does is it breaks La Lita more. And then it does section off some of the areas within Santa Barbara. Now, you still have here four areas that are representative within Santa Barbara Unified, but what happens here is you have several that are now have no representation there, which from your considerations, the first time I know there was, that was a major consideration there. So if we go to the numbers, you can see that on there. Okay. So our variance here is five, which is, is still acceptable. I want you to know that. It is the highest of our scenarios, but it is still within the allowable variance level. But when you look at the numbers here, and I know that they are, are little up there. So we take the ideal size now, and the ideal size changes down to 27.2. So you can see that from a general population, we're pretty close to that. But what, what happens really when you start looking at the grade columns there from a representation standpoint, the numbers get a little more skewed just because of, of where people live within the district. And so, for example, if you look at the Hispanic and Latino population, and let's say we focus on trustee area number two, in the grade, you can see there is a 42% voting population there. So it doesn't allow for us to have a, a majority minority area. And it really doesn't come near to that either. And, and one of the things that you can see happens is it almost creates some areas that are underrepresented comparatively to the previous scenarios. But we do have a, you know, a map that does fit within the legal variance and does still meet those other two metrics if it was something you wanted to consider. Next slide there. As, as you know, this is a new map, and so we don't have any changes on this one. And I think before I open it up to just general questions right now, Mr. Price, would you like to add any additional context to these?
Does that conclude your comments, Scott?
Yes, it does. And Greg Price, if he's in the room, I think he was.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, please.
He said he would respond to board questions.
Okay, great. Sorry, I cannot hear, hear the commentary there. So that's it for me now. And again, what I'm looking for at this time is any questions you have or additional revisions you might want to consider. And then what we will do is take those and host another community meeting, and then make any additional revisions if necessary and bring those back to you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Members of the public, it's now time for a public comment on this report. Remember to use your Zoom icon to raise your hands. Mr. Heer, are there any public comments on the trustee area maps?
Thank you, President Ford. We do have a public comment. We have Maria Castner.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to just respond because this is a big topic, which is, I, I assume this is about racial discrimination. You know, I'm a white parent of a white disabled child that has been discriminated against by the government, especially Santa Barbara Unified School District, for all this time that has resulted in an in, out of court and one in federal court, special educations settlement. And I would like to address this as, the government systematically prevents any group, regardless of race, to access their rights. And the people that have been employees with the Santa Barbara Unified School District, they have been every racial background. They have been Hispanic, they have been black, they have been white, and they have been very bureaucrats that have prevented my daughter from accessing her rights. And this constant focus on race is just the opposite of what our constitution is supposed to be about. We are individuals under the law and we should all be treated and have access. I think if there's any, any issue where inequality comes in, it's socioeconomic status and education. And it seems our public education is failing. It's not at all fostering independent, critical thinking, asking questions. It's now selling our children ideologies that are not founded in science and fact-finding. And I think I have a track record with this school district being a fact-finder. Every time I prevail, when I call out all these bureaucrats. And so this constant focus on race.
Society. President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have questions or comments on the maps presented? Ms. Mills, do you have any questions?
I just made the observation that, let me see, on the, on map three, the percentage is, the percentages in terms of the, let me see, sorry. The Latino population of voting age and the white, okay, yeah, I'm looking at it here. Yeah, said it seems like the population of the white voters is grouped higher in area, trustee area three. And on that same one, the Latino voters are substantially lower, as well as the black a, you know, voters of age. That was one observation I had, and similar with, in primarily in that one, and then some also in scenario four, where of course, that was the one where we have the seven trustees area. The distribution does not seem as balanced to me.
Scott, can you comment on the reason for these sort of discrepancies that stick out to us?
Yeah, and, and thank you. You, you are correct here. So when we move these boundaries around, and it encapsulates the individuals who live in those areas, certainly, and, and this is the, the process of making revisions, you know, small moves on these maps could impact the demographic makeup of that trustee area just by moving those. And so, you know, as you know, the difference really between, let's just say, scenario two and scenario three, where we moved that number three map over to the west really, and, and then north, it just picks up a different demographic because of the folks who, who live there. And so really, our job right now, and you kind of hit it on the head, is to find a scenario, find a, a map that when you go up and down the list there, you can really see a good balance, both from the amount of inhabitants, but also a good balance of representation amongst each trustee area. And so I think that, that is a, a great observation. And what we can do for number three is go ahead and tweak that area a little bit, and see if we can make an impact to balance things a little bit more on that one. And, and you're absolutely right, especially on, on number four. When you're pulling in fewer people, which, you know, trying to separate these areas and draw lines that, that try to balance out population, it's a little harder to do with seven to also still meet your other metrics. So if there are some thoughts on how you might give us a suggestion to move those lines around, we can. But it's certainly just because of where individuals live within the entire district with seven, it, it does get a little more challenging just to find the perfect balance. Now, as I said, we're still within, we're still within variance, but we have, we have to still try to keep contiguous, not have things that have little fingers. And what I mean, you know, if you look, for example, on number four, there's some strands that try to reach over to get some more population, just so we can keep things balanced and try to keep equal representation. And so we want to try to avoid that if possible. But sometimes when you, you get more areas like that, when inhabitants are more dispersed, you have to make some of those tweaks. So I do think we have a, an easy action item for number three. And then again, if anybody has some thoughts maybe for number four that we could contemplate, I'm, I'm open to writing those down, too.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smolten, please.
Yes, thank you. Those were my observations as well. So I, I'd like to know what, are there any other maps have been, you know, presented to you from, in your community meetings? Has anyone else presented other maps besides the one that you are producing here?
Uh, no, ma'am, not today.
Is that something as part of your, part of the community meetings that it's open to have other maps drawn?
Um, I haven't had that before. Typically, they may have a comment, can you run, you know, a scenario that moves this boundary over here? And what would that do, you know, to the, to the spread of, of the numbers and things? So that's kind of the feedback that we're typically soliciting.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking forward to ask how we can talk about making those adjustments because they were pretty, they changed really clearly between the two and one, and then three and four really made that disparity become really clear. So I don't have an answer to that, but I'm just wondering how can we get that, other opinions, you know, out in the community? And I don't know if that's the questions we ask them or if we invite other groups.
Thank you. Ms. Capps, please.
Thank you. I had one question about the stakeholder meetings. And I'm sure you've reviewed this, but how are the invitations being conveyed? And I specifically want to know if the stakeholders who helped get us to this point of, of moving to districts, have they been specifically invited to weigh in? I think that would be important.
Uh, that, as far as the invitation process, I'm not sure, Kami, if you want to talk about the outreach effort on that front?
Sure, yes, happy to. You know, what we've been doing so far is we've used Parents Square, we've done press releases, we've had a couple of press releases appear in News Hawk. I've invited the, the press to cover it, but so far, no interest. But we've also used social media, and I've shared it with a few groups in town who I know kind of are people who pay attention to things going on in the schools. So if you have any other ideas, I'm happy to hear them. So far, we have run into a, a couple of our community meetings have been on busy nights with other things going on. So there's competition for people's time and attention. So, so far, that's what we've been doing.
Thank you, Ms. Bono. Yeah, I do, since you, since you gave me the opportunity, I would request that the stakeholders who helped bring this about could be specifically invited to the upcoming outreach meetings?
Absolutely.
And, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Price knows who they are. If you don't, we can, we can certainly share that. But I think that would be really important because I just would love to hear more feedback. And I understand, you know, you have a, a community hearing, and it's fairly common in local government that, you know, people don't show up, it's hard. And so I would just say, let's try to bring it to the folks that who have already, you know, expressed years of vested interest in this. I'm going to kind of piggyback on my questions from two weeks ago. Again, I just want to see with Mr. Price here, who's gone through this with other school districts and also to our consultant. Again, I just raised the concern I have about the disparity of the number of schools in each district. And just doing a tally, you know, scenario one, the first district where I reside, so this is not a problem for me, but has six schools. Second, second district has six schools, third district has three schools, fourth district has one school, and fifth district has two. And I just want us to be thinking about, what would that be like, again, to have a school board member who just represents one school? And what does that mean for the governance of this body? Again, I don't have the answer. I would love to understand. Has that played out somewhere else? I just, I can imagine that that would really change a, a dynamic of your role as a school board member if you've been elected really to represent one school with a whole district in mind as your job, but, but what the ramifications of that are. If there's any examples anywhere, I would love to understand that because I could go through each one. But essentially, that's the, in each scenario, there's a, a strong imbalance of district where, again, in the South, which makes sense given the, the makeup of our district, district one or two have, you know, six or seven schools each, and the ones in North have maybe one. In fact, it looked as though one of them, unless it's, I can't tell, it's right on the border, might not have any schools. I'm hoping that that, I think that San Marcos would be in that district. But again, I just, I'm kind of tossing this up, if there's any examples of this where the, where the outcome after completing this process reflects such an imbalance of the actual number of schools and those communities reflected in the makeup of the districts. Sure, Mr. Price, if you have it.
I'm not aware of any examples of the type that you're giving examples of. giving examples of, but we can see a certain effect of what you're talking about. For example, in map number four, which is a seven trustee area map. So for example, area number seven, way out to the west, I believe has Los Pueblos High School and nothing else. So the kind of scenario that you're hypothesizing would thereby be created where trustees from that area would be elected based upon their constituents who don't send any of their children to Santa Barbara Unified Elementary Schools, which might be seen definitely as problematic. The situation with Santa Barbara Unified is a little bit unique because, of course, the elementary area of the district is not contiguous with the unified district. So that historically and in this regard, you know, creates some, some potential issues. And I know Scott has considered this issue. And in fact, we've talked about it in our meetings. But given the population distribution for the entire district to be carved up in a way that would be more representative of schools within each trustee area, I believe would require that you'd have to move into non-contiguous trustee areas, which would be little islands. There's no law against that when it comes to school districts. The California Constitution does prohibit that for other types of elected offices and agencies. There's a bill pending in the legislature that, if passed, would outlaw that. And one of the six or so considerations under CVRA that are appropriate to be looked at is contiguity, which of course would be lost here. So while it would be possible, without breaking the current law, to break it up in a way that would be more representative, there could be potential legal challenges. So there are trade-offs and it's difficult because it does not allow for an allocation among schools that would be seen as desirable.
Thank you. Did Scott have anything to add on that front?
I'd say that was very well said. And really, again, if you go back to those base considerations, and I know, I know the reason for the ask, and it makes a lot of sense. It is one of the considerations that a board may consider is locations of schools, boundaries, sites, things of that nature. And, and so when we ran a few of these scenarios here to get those first two that are in fact required to meet those requirements, we've tried to make it as representative as possible, at least within, you know, the elementary school district there. So really, I guess, when you're looking at if we can't move things around enough to get equal representation of school sites, you know, one of the other considerations to look at is communities of interest. And so same number of inhabitants, same number of individuals who can vote that are going to be representing, you know, issues of the district. When you look at potential boundaries and where you might move lines, you may, and this is where, you know, you guys know better than me, you know, if you look at scenario two, three, if there's a way to draw those lines that represent distinct communities of interest, other, you know, natural landmarks or things that might make sense from a representation standpoint, that still meet the first two requirements of having, you know, a balanced number of inhabitants and a balanced representation as well. And so, you know, that is probably all I can elaborate on there right now. So if there are some considerations that you would want to maybe have us refine, we can. And I think, as I said, our initial action to those requests last time was try to get as many of the voting areas into Santa Barbara Unified's elementary district to have that in there. And then also then kind of look at communities of interest and representation where we turn it.
Thank you. I'm going to be in touch with the stake, again, the stakeholders who helped get us to this point of districts and to see if, you know, if this is something that they envisioned, that there would be, you know, with every single scenario this way, it would be quite lopsided. And what does that, what does that mean for, again, our governance? So I'll do that, but I would just, I would love, you know, for the rest of the board to understand their, you know, their vision when this was something that they advocated for. Again, something that I supported, but I just didn't, when I supported it, I didn't quite understand that, given the way that the map is, that the likely outcome will be such that it is, which is a couple of districts representing, a couple of board members representing one or two schools and a couple of board members representing six or seven. So anyway, thanks for that. I'm just remain concerned, but understand that there's no, there's trade-offs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez.
Yes, thank you for the report. I did attend the first hearing and I was the only one. I want to make note of that, nobody else did. I do, I am actually shocked and concerned about the imbalance between map number three and number four. And I do agree 100% with Ms. Capps. I think we need to reach out to the proponents of seven trustees and see if they have any ideas, any suggestion about this imbalance. I was looking at trustee number one and it goes from a difference of 47 in map number three to a difference of almost 72% in scenario number four. So that's of, that's of great concern for me as well. So I look forward to hopefully getting some input and maybe some different ideas. So thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kelly, do you have any comments?
Thank you for your presentation. I thought it was great. All of the questions that I had were already asked, so thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Price, I wonder if you could help the board just a little bit because I do think it's unclear as to the, sort of the historical background related to the importance of having seven trustee areas. And I think that we have enough new board members and people that are quite interested in the rationale behind the request for that, that it would be helpful for you to just review it.
Yes, thank you. In the immediate aftermath of the boards adopting a resolution to move away from at-large elections to district trustee area elections in 2018, the district received a communication from retired Judge Ochoa and Jacqueline Enda wanting, and in fact, at that time insisting, that the redistricting that occur be broken out into seven trustee areas and not five. There was quite a bit of discussion that I had with Judge Ochoa at that time. And what was ultimately decided was that when the time came after the release of the 2020 census, that it was agreed that the board would consider as an option, a seven trustee area district. Because until it's actually looked at and the demographics are looked at and compared with the five trustee area situation, no one can really say. And so further action on that was deferred literally until now. And so we can see what that results in. And if you'd like, I could comment on what I think the somewhat obvious impact would be of having a seven trustee area situation.
I think that would be great.
Well, there's not a great deal of law under the CVRA, I would say, but quite a bit of law under the Federal Voting Rights Act and around the United States. And there are a variety of things that have been defined that relate to different problems that arise. And I'm not going to go into them, but cracking, packing, stacking are the types of things. Usually, those things are found to exist when there is some motive that is not a positive motive with respect to minorities. But one could take the position that under mount number four, which boosts up in one of the areas, the voting age Hispanic population, all the way up to 42%, that because of the natural dilution, which is another term that's used in the cases, that occurs in other areas, actually reduces the impact of Hispanics in the other trustee areas under the seven trustee area scenario. And of course, as you can also, as you can all see, in one of those trustee areas, the Hispanic voting age population is down to 11%. In many respects, that is seen as a negative from the standpoint of scrutinizing redistricting in a way that promotes the advancement of minority impacts on elections. So I'll just give you one example. There was a a case a number of years ago before the California Supreme Court. And in upholding the configuration that was under challenge, the court said that the proposed districts avoided both unnecessary fragmentation of relevant minority groups into multiple districts and avoided undue concentration of such groups within a single district, which the court called packing. So there are definite downsides that one might identify with the seven trustee area scenario combined with what trustee Capps was asking about a few minutes ago, obviously, because of the lack of certainly any elementary schools in trustee, proposed trustee area number seven. And in contrast to that, I believe you could prove me wrong in looking at the numbers, but I believe that the most even concentration of minority or Hispanic voters throughout the, in the other three maps, is in trustee area number two, where the Hispanic voting age populations range between, roughly between 20 and 25%. I will say that there is no requirement in the law that attempts be made to achieve a majority minority population in any trustee area. And in fact, there's no requirement that a, what are called near majority be attempted to be achieved. In fact, the Attorney General of the state just filed a brief in the Santa Monica case, making that argument, that there is no such requirement to enhance the minority population within one or more districts so as to be able to achieve a successful outcome, even when being paired with others. So the last thing I think I would point out is that other relevant factors that I don't believe are listed on Scott's handout include looking at the history of discrimination in the locality, including looking at the most recent electoral results and looking at the makeup of the elected board in relation to the community as a whole. So you can imagine scenarios where, and certain of these have occurred in other areas, like in the San Joaquin Valley in certain cases, where the outcome would be, where areas would be subject to question. But I think it's a relevant factor, certainly, to look at the the various representative, the various groups that your board members represent in the community as a factor that you might conclude tends to support continuing to have even representation throughout the area. And that would be certainly under area number two, even more than in area number one or area number three. So the bottom line is that you have wide latitude in deciding how you're going to divide up these areas. The points where you get to what would be something that would be problematic and subject to legal challenge are very few. I think just the one that trustee Capps was asking about or that I offered up a few minutes ago would be one, if you were to break it up into non-contiguous areas. But other than that, you have wide latitude and you have a lot of discretion in ultimately making the decision. So are there any other questions?
No. So saying none, thank you so much to Mr. Newell and Mr. Price. And I will call the second hearing officially closed. And Cooperative Strategies will take back the input and work towards a final presentation on the trustee area maps for review in November, I believe. Or maybe there are two more. Are there two more presentations? I think two more, November and December. And so again, thank you very much. Board members, at this time, I am going to adjourn to our break. We've been going quite a ways, quite a while. And so we'll take a little more than 10 minutes and reconvene at 8:10, please. Quickly going back to public comments, Mr. Hira, are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
President, we have one public comment on this item.
Okay, please.
Roseanne Crawford.
Down check, please. Oh, thank you. I'm going back to something earlier. I apologize, but I had the wrong hand up. I had the lower hand. So I'm going to speak now on what I want to do. Earlier in the evening, there were a number of speakers that expressed their concern about the removal of the school resource deputy at San Marcos. I certainly hope that you'll consider bringing this back to reconsideration. Why? I don't feel it was an inclusive process. What happened was, is the item was taken from an action item to a discussion and then voted on. And it was not inclusive. There was only a certain organized groups that had been invited to speak. And so the representative, who's the student representative on council, he clearly stated he wanted any action held until more could be included in the conversation because that's what he had not heard. And obviously, since 2016, there had been an officer on campus and it was needed for a variety of reasons, including an increase in crime and stabbings and so forth. I looked up all the duties, which was clearly missing as an attachment in the meeting of what a resource officer does. There are many. The four that stood out to me the most beyond regular academy training is that they are trained in principles of de-escalation, technical communication training, bias and racial profiling, traffic intervention. Please reconsider.
President, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. You do not have any other hands raised?
Actually, yes, there's four more hands raised just now.
Okay, in the spirit of making sure people have an opportunity to speak. In the spirit of making sure people have an opportunity to speak, I will allow those four to speak, and that should be about six more minutes. So we will conclude public comment on non-agenda items at 8:20.
Our next three speakers are Sarah Anderson, Crisita Silvers, Noel Cabrera, Sheriff Bill Brown. I'll start with Crisita Silvers.
Good evening. My name is Crisita Silvers, and I'm a parent to both current and future San Marcos students. Thank you so much for listening to the youth and families you serve and to the research, all telling us armed law enforcement in our schools are unnecessary, do not increase safety, and are destructive for many students on a daily basis. The testimonies are powerful, and I encourage folks who haven't heard them to listen. Your justified decision to provide alternative resource positions to our schools moves us closer to keeping all of our children safe, and it aligns with your new data-driven approach of providing students with systems of support rather than criminalization and expulsion. It's evident that Dr. Glazer needs support, too. San Marcos is a large school, and crises do occur, the majority of which are mental health and medical in nature, and are best served by professionals well-trained in those fields. Please ensure that any new campus positions are not just another form of law enforcement. Ensure they are professionals with primary training in mental health, child development, trauma, de-escalation, restorative practices, and are culturally competent to work with our students, not against them. We already have successful examples of people doing this work in our schools. We just need more of them. When law enforcement is truly needed, let's have an off-campus sheriff liaison similar to what the Santa Barbara Police Department provides in their area. And please, continue to listen to the youth who know from experience what makes them safe and what does not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sarah Anderson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Can you say your name, please?
This is Brian Anderson. I got cut off earlier somehow, so I'm just going to continue. We are all here because we love kids, both our own and our students. We love them differently, just like parents do. Teachers and staff have different points of view, just like parents do. Can we all agree that this is good? Diverse points of view, discussion, and critical thinking before a decision is made is very important in life. My background, I learned from all of my parents. I've taken the good, and I've learned from the bad. Now, as a parent and teacher, I continue to do the same thing. I promote critical thinking and discernment to my kids and to my students. I encourage respect, grace, and students to engage in class discussions as we build community one day at a time. The key is respect on all sides. School administration wants to be respected and heard, as do teachers, parents, and students. Without the respect of both sides, then what communication and community decisions cannot be made. I'm asking for further improvements in communication between the board and the community. Real discussion, respect, and follow-through. Without these things, there is no respect and results in one-sided decisions. Face-to-face communication is the only way this can be done. These decisions are too important to be done in a virtual way. Not everyone fits into the box that the board expects, and uniqueness should be celebrated. As genders, races, and ethnicities are honored and respected, we expect our right to our vaccination choice to be honored and respected, not to be put on unpaid leave. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Noel Cabrera. Ms. Cabrera, you're Zoom, it's not updated. Can you please update your Zoom so I can allow you to speak? We'll go to the next speaker, Sheriff Bill Brown.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, President Ford and members of the school board. I'm Sheriff Bill Brown. We in the sheriff's office were disappointed that on October 12th, the board voted to discontinue having school resource deputies, or SRDs, on campuses. A school resource deputy is a specially selected and trained deputy assigned to a school as a resource for the students and school staff. SRDs effectively diffuse situations ranging from fights, threats, self-harm, and drug abuse on campus. Although they're available to provide an immediate response to any threat, their primary role is to establish good relationships with students and faculty and utilize those relationships to avert trouble before it starts. They also provide a safe space for survivors of abuse to report their abusers, and they help parents overcome truancy, runaway, and behavior issues with their children. Through their unique partnerships with their schools, our school resource deputies have successfully diverted juveniles away from the justice system, either by utilizing administrative solutions or by turning a troublesome situation into an opportunity for growth through counseling and mentorship. As an example, during the 10 years, the school resource deputy George Hedricks has been assigned to Dos Pueblos High School, he has not felt the need to book a single student into juvenile hall. We have enjoyed an exceptional working relationship with the district and have been strong partners in keeping our students safe. I respectfully ask you to reconsider the decision of October 12.
Thank you. Next speaker, Noel Cabrera.
Good evening. My name is Noel Cabrera. I'm a sophomore at San Marcos High School, and I'm speaking tonight as a representative from the COPS Off-Campus Youth Coalition. I would firstly like to thank board members for listening to the students and the testimonies that were shared, along with the data and research that we presented. For those of you who did not hear the public comments made at the last board meeting, I encourage you to listen to those comments and to read the testimonies on our Instagram page, COPS Off-Campus SB, so that you can have a better understanding of why having SROs on campus does not serve the best interest of the diverse student population. Now that the contract has not been renewed, the Youth Coalition encourages you all to continue to move in the direction of reimagining school safety in a way that does not involve having police on campus, and instead putting that money towards a resource that can serve and benefit all. We ask that the person you hire to help Dr. Glazer at San Marcos is well-versed in restorative justice practices, de-escalation techniques, culturally competent, possibly a social worker or someone trained in mental health that understands trauma, and overall, someone who is not just an SRO with another title. We would also like to highlight that campus security can support safety at our high schools as well, as they are employees of the school who have relationships with the students, and we can leverage their positions to support the administration. The Youth Coalition also asks that we continue to be involved in the conversations with the school district and administrators. As you move forward to help and to develop an alternative to SROs that actually makes school a safer place for all students, and that can address the root problem of mental health in a productive and inclusive way. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Board members, we now go to item E, the acceptance of donations. At this time, I would, as per Administrative Regulation 3290, is there a motion to accept the donation of $1,000 from Santa Barbara Education Foundation for October 26, 2021?
I still move.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Aye. This motion passes unanimously with much gratitude. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda item, we now move on to approve the items that are considered routine, not likely to require, in most cases, any discussion. Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the board approves all of the consent agenda items, and the board has had an opportunity already to consider, ask questions about these items before tonight. First, are there any public comments on consent agenda items, Ms. Trujillo?
No public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. So before I call for the motion, board members or Dr. Maldonado, are there any items on the consent agenda item that require more information, comments, or discussion?
I say, try to raise my hand. Thank you.
I saw you.
Board members and board president, I'd like to move consent item number 16 to action item. It's the resolution recognizing a state of emergency and authorizing teleconference meetings. That should have been under action. Our apologies for that.
Thank you. So, board members, may I now have a motion? Oh, well, I'm sorry, there are questions from board members. Ms. Alves.
I do have some questions on item number 15. If it's better, we can pull it, or I can ask my questions right now.
Ask your questions.
Okay. Number 15, it says on the cover of the item, it says the dollar amount is $26,000, and the contract says it's $25,000. So I want to clarify, is it $25,000 or $26,000 for the contract?
It will be, thank you for that question. It will be, as it is written in the contract, which will be $25,000. So the cover on board docs is incorrect. And we'll correct that.
And then the budget source is LCAP. Is that already budgeted in LCAP, or is this in addition to?
So this is budgeted under Goal Three. Mr. Vance, thank you.
It's under Goal, yes, it is in LCAP. It's under Goal Three, like you said. I believe it's action item number one, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Then a couple more questions in regards to, I'm trying to get a clear picture of what we get in return for this investment. And what I like to do is, I like to have a progress report at a board meeting of, it says we're going to do two job fairs, three town hall meetings, and one community forum. So that's five, that's six events. I like for us to have a report and update of what's our success, how we're doing, is this money well-spent, which I think it is. So I like to have a progress report along the way. And also, I like to have a summary, a written report that it could be referred to in the future for us to continue this practice and refine our practice of what did we learn, what can we do better as far as outreach, especially to this community.
Thank you, Board Member Alvarez. We will definitely get that to you.
Thank you.
Perhaps we can add that to the future agenda items in time for at least, at least putting it on future agenda items for the November meeting. Board members, other questions? Ms. Sims-Morton, please.
Just on that same one, when we were talking about awareness to underserved communities, so this is primarily looking at Latinos. So are we looking at other underserved publics? How are we doing that in order to have the same criteria in terms of reporting back in progress?
Yes, I am reaching out to other groups that I can contact, declare African-American groups that can help me with similar outreach in those communities, and also, you know, mixed-race populations. So this is something that we want to start with, and in the meantime, reach out to others.
Okay, so the other groups that, because oftentimes when I'll ask something, I think it's coming from an African-American perspective. It is, but I just want to make sure we're talking about underserved totally, that that's inclusive of everyone.
Yes. Thank you for that. So I will be another, just to clarify, I'll be bringing another contract, another similar contract to continue this work with other groups as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? I see none. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on items F2 through 17, removing item 16 and moving it to the action agenda?
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Morton, and a second. Thank you. Ms. Munoz, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Aye, all in favor, and that motion passes, the consent agenda passes unanimously. That takes us to our action agenda. Dr. Maldonado, would you like to start with the resolution?
Yes, let me get back into the resolution language. So this item is based on Governor Newsom's changes to laws regarding teleconferencing meetings like ours. That's Bill AB 361. Would you like me to read the resolution language? Or are we moving to?
Yes, please. Or if we could see it up on the...
There it is. Great.
Sure, please read it.
Sure. Santa Barbara Unified School District Resolution Recognizing a State of Emergency and Authorizing Teleconference Meetings. Whereas in response to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Newsom adopted a series of executive orders allowing the legislative bodies of local governments to meet remotely via teleconference so long as other provisions of the Ralph &amp; Brown Act, known as the Brown Act, were followed. And whereas on September 16, 2021, Governor Newsom signed AB 361, which immediately amended the Brown Act, allowing governing boards to continue holding virtual meetings outside the teleconference, teleconferencing requirements of Government Code Section 54953B. If the board makes a finding that there is a proclaimed state of emergency, and either one, state or local officials have imposed or recommended social distancing measures, or two, meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health or safety of attendees due to the emergency. And whereas on March 4, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a statewide emergency arising from COVID-19 pursuant to Government Code Section 8625, and whereas social distancing measures have been recommended by the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education believes the spread of COVID-19 poses an imminent risk to the health and safety of in-person meeting attendees, and whereas the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education is committed to open and transparent governance in compliance with the Brown Act, and whereas the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education is conducting virtual meetings by way of telephonic and/or internet-based services as to allow members of the public to fully participate in meetings and offer public comment. It is hereby resolved by the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education. The Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education has reconsidered the circumstances of the state of emergency and recognizes that the state of emergency in the state of California continues to exist due to COVID-19 pandemic. The Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education finds that social distancing measures must, excuse me, that social distancing measures remain recommended by state and local officials, and the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Education authorizes the use of teleconferencing for all meetings in accordance with Government Code Section 54953E and all other applicable provisions of the Brown Act for a period of 30 days from the adoption of this resolution, or such time that the governing board adopts a subsequent resolution in accordance with Government Section 54943E3.
Would you like to make any other comments on this before we go to public comments?
I, actually, the only comment I have is that we are still in a state of pandemic. We are still under an emergency situation, and I think this resolution just reminds me, and hopefully, board members and others, that this is still not over, and therefore we must continue to take precautions.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hio, are there any public comments about AB 361?
Thank you, President Ford. We do have three public comment on this item. I will start with Sheridan Rosenberg, Claudia Henry, and Maria Kastner. Sheridan Rosenberg.
Hi, actually, I'm really happy this is on the agenda. You know, making people stand out in the parking lot who want to participate makes them appear to be protesters when they're parents and they're community members. It's demeaning. It's, it's actually really manipulative. I know that, Hilda, I saw photographs of the in-service day with at least 300 teachers in an auditorium, sitting side by side. No one was spaced, distant, you weren't wearing a mask, and yet the community writ large is not allowed to come in and have proper public engagement. I can tell you one thing, seeing those dancers, and yet you had parents and community members standing outside in the cold, and how many people couldn't call in? Roseanne Crawford, who's going to speak next, had her hand up the entire time during non-agenda item public comment, and she wasn't called on. This has to stop. What you're doing is obvious to the community. You're hiding out, and you're closing us out from having proper meetings that are warm, that are dignified, that make us appear as parents and participants. We're not protesters here. You have a back room that is wide open with plenty of seats. If you're still concerned about social distancing, we should be able to sit in that room, have a podium with a microphone where you can face us.
Next speaker is Claudia Henry.
Hello, this is Claudia Henry. I'm one of those speakers who had my hand raised during public comment, and then we were told the comment was over, and then we were told, no, there were five more speakers. So while you may be following in some legalistic way the Brown Act, I feel rather disenfranchised tonight, so I will read my general comment on discrimination. At past meetings, I've expressed concern over the difficulties processing all the changing health information and applying it locally. Like others, I don't have confidence that our public health engages with important scientific information. Like others, I don't have confidence that our public health engages with important scientific information. I don't think our children are getting well educated on this topic, nor are the parents. For example, if we know from the CDC and hospital reports that vaccinated people can carry COVID and spread it asymptomatically, then why are the vaccinated students not included in the current surveillance, now random testing, which is anything but random? Why are only vaccinated students exempt from this testing? If we are seeing across the country and world that COVID vaccination shots are not preventing transmission and causing infection, how is this flawed testing policy increasing our local student health? This is a discriminatory practice. I don't see how the sign on the side of the school board. I'm wondering, as I read last March in EdSource.org, when it reported that Santa Barbara School District received $35 million of extra funding for COVID, if this money is being used to endorse an inherently discriminatory policy? Please use this money.
Thank you. Next speaker is Maria Kastner.
Good evening again. I would like to say according to the California Emergency Service Act, the ESA, ESA Section 8558B, a state of emergency can only be called if the threat overwhelms the current resources of the state. At the onset of the so-called pandemic, healthcare workers were laid off statewide. Therefore, our state resources were not overwhelmed, as they are not overwhelmed today. Furthermore, the state of emergency has to be terminated at the earliest possible date. The orders on regulation shall be in writing and take effect immediately on issuance. The temporary suspension of any statute, ordinance, regulation or rule shall remain in effect until the order or regulation is rescinded by the governor. The governor proclaims the termination of the state of emergency or for a period of 60 days, whichever occurs first. We have a perpetual state of emergency in the state of California. Whenever the state of war emergency or state of emergency has been terminated, the orders and regulations shall be of no further force or effect. This means that all of the orders that were created under the state of emergency are also expired, including without limited to stay-at-home orders, social distancing, wearing of masks, closing of businesses and schools. I guess my point is, we have a perpetual state of emergency. This is a total power grab from the top down. And enough is enough and enough people need to start educating themselves on the rule of law. The government is totally bypassing the rule of law and this needs to stop. And it starts with our election time.
Last speaker is Anna Garcia.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that I appreciate that you all will be extending the virtual meeting access. And I hope that even at some point when hopefully we're not in pandemic state of emergency, this will continue to be a practice that's implemented. I have never been able to attend the meetings before because it was impossible for me to do so with all the responsibilities that I have to navigate outside of work. And then I also just want to make sure to clarify that no one is being forced to stand outside, right? You are, I, I'm able to zoom in just as anyone else can. So making the choice to stand in a parking lot is not something that the board is enforcing or making people do. And then another point of clarification that I wanted to make is that if people were to be allowed to participate in person, they would need to be vaccinated, right? Because we have a vaccine mandate on the campus. So those are the points I wanted to make. Again, I wanted to say thank you for making it more accessible for more of the community to be able to show up so that you're not only hearing from a very slim sliver of who our supposed community is in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any comments that you would like to make? I see none. And I wonder if Dr. Maldonado, you wanted to make a clarification on something that has been brought up a couple times this evening?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to clarify to board members that for our October 18th event with teachers, we did have verification of vaccine for teachers that attended the event at San Marcos High School. We also provided an opportunity for those who are unvaccinated to provide verification of a negative COVID test 72 hours prior to arriving at the school and or onsite for a rapid test. We also allowed for some members of the staff who didn't feel comfortable being in the auditorium to view the speaker, myself and Dr. Nancy Frye, from three other classrooms or school spaces in the school site so that we could also continue to remain socially distanced. And those are precautions we take very seriously. And I wanted to make sure that, to set the record straight, that that is how we handled October 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I'd like to ask for a motion, a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-22-11, Recognizing a State of Emergency and Authorizing Teleconference Meetings. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And a second, Ms. Simms-Morton, thank you very much. Board members, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes unanimously. On to the next action agenda item. This is the increase in substitute teacher rates for the 2021 school year. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Beckio.
Thank you. And good evening, Board President Ford, Board Member Superintendent Maldonado. I bring before you this action item. I know that you're aware that there is an employee shortage and that is also being seen in the substitute pool that we have. And so this is being brought before you. We did consult with principals who are fully supportive of this. And there's really two reasons that I wanted to bring to your attention before you take and consider this matter. One is that we're bringing this forward because we have subs that are, that we have in positions that are leaving or considering leaving to go to other vacant positions. As you know, there's a lot of vacant positions throughout the community. And so this will incentivize them to actually stay in their current positions. And we also are bringing this forward to you today also to attempt to increase our sub pool and get a larger number of subs to be active and take active assignments. You will notice that there's three types of substitutes. And we, I outlined each of those and what their current rate was and what, what the proposal is to move them to for the 2122 school year. I'd worked on this item in collaboration with Kim Hernandez and she gave us some information about the total cost, projected cost of this initiative. And with that, I will take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Beckio. I know I am absolutely delighted to see this here. I wonder if there are any public comments, Mr. Hill?
No public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Then, board members, do you have further questions or comments? Ms. Alvarez.
When will this be effective?
I believe it was November 1st is when we want to make this effective and it is not retroactive.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you very much for doing this. We appreciate our subs and we want to make sure that they're compensated fairly and that we are competitive as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Just one, one small request. In the future, for funding source, would you spell it out? Because I know we're all really used to acronyms, but ELO doesn't mean much to a lot of people. I think it was a musical group at one point.
Electric Light Orchestra.
So also, and also my, my, my standard question, is this already included in the plan, in the ELO plan? So this is not an additional expense?
So ELO is not the Electric Light Orchestra.
Okay.
That's correct. It's the Expanding Learning Opportunities Grant. In the plan that was created, if you remember, that was created by Meg Chate and with assistance with the staff. And that was submitted, I think it was around April or May. At that time, there was no such thing as COVID variant or the Delta variant. So as well as the plan itself was originally a one-year plan. Oh, excuse me, it was a one-year funding source. So we were supposed to use all of that money by the end of 2022, or excuse me, 2022, correct. The state has actually expanded it to three years. So everything has changed. So now this is in addition to the plan, this sub situation, so.
Thank you.
And it ties in, I'm sorry, sorry, it does tie into the 85% or more direct instruction to students.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thanks. Ms. Simms-Morton, please.
So will this be, thank you, President Ford. Will this be the new rates going forward? I know it says here for 2122. So going into the next school year, will the new rates be effective then?
What we are asking for from the board tonight is approval of these rates for the 2122 school year.
So just through the end of the year?
Just for the end of this, through to the end of this school year. If we were going to change the rates that are currently in place, we would bring back another proposal to address the 2223 school year and beyond.
Because I was just thinking in terms of that, if that's an incentive, maybe that's something we look for it as a, a long-term thing in terms of making sure that we're compensating our, our subs in terms of that. So maybe as we look at our budget for 2223, we might want to consider that.
Yeah, we anticipate that we will not return back to the current rates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, I appreciated the report and then the details also, and certainly has my support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you just reiterate for the public, any who are calling in or paying attention at this point? How does this put us in terms of competition with other districts in the area?
We are very comparable, either equal or above the other local districts, except I think Montecito, we might still be lower than Montecito Union.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Hernandez?
Especially when it comes to our, our really long-term subs. We increased them pretty much more than the other group because they are long-term subs and they're more comparable with our, you know, kind of our regular teaching group. And we did look at, at other districts that were nearby and in some cases were a little bit higher, some cases were just right on. And I won't say anything about Montecito.
I believe we're number two.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to approve this action item to increase substitute teacher rates for the 2122 school year.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And a second, Ms. Simms-Morton, thank you very much. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands and saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Ms. Capps. This motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And on to the approval of the SIR3 expenditure plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Vance.
Thank you, President Ford, Dr. Maldonado, board members, good evening. SIR3, that is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Plan. Those are funds designed specifically to support our students who have been hit with academic, social, emotional and mental health needs due to the pandemic. This is actually one of the several funding sources we received due to the, I guess during the spring, we received two state funding sources. We mentioned one, which was ELO. That was the Expanded Learning Opportunities Funding Source. We received also the in-person instruction grant. So those are both state funds. And then we received SIR2 and SIR3 funding. The planning for those funds occurred during the spring. So that occurred right in April and going all the way to beginning of June. We did the planning for those funds and this includes SIR3 as well as we, we included the budgeting and the plan for the budget for our general fund as well as the LCAP. So everything was occurring at the same time. The plan itself has been, the state released a template in June and then we're able to put together a plan that's aligned to really what everyone has been needing and have been asking for, which is specifically addressing the needs of our students, mainly helping them with learning recovery and with mental, social, emotional support. So this is our plan that we present to you. Again, 20% or more of the funding goes towards specifically interventions that address academic learning. So, and that's what I have for you.
Thank you very much. I'm really impressed with the plan and I think it's really helpful to our students. I'd like to know if there are any public comments, Mr. Hill, on this item?
President Ford, there are no comments on this item.
Thank you very much. So board members, how about questions or concerns or comments, please? Ms. Alvarez, please.
Thank you. And I know you answered a lot of my questions, so I'm only ask, I'm only going to ask a lot less, a lot less. So is, is this plan, the SIR3, a continuation of our SIR2 funds, the programs that we started funding for SIR2? For example, we had, we added a couple of FTEs for HR and I believe either one or two for business, I don't remember. So are we going to continue funding those? It's not an additional two FTEs, but it's the same ones? Is that what this plan is?
Yes, that's exactly it. And remember, we, we received SIR2 and SIR3 at the same time. If you think about when we first started budgeting, you, you budget strategically based on the amount of time you have that money. So ELO, IPI were really what we were focusing on because that was a one-year funding source at that time. So we focused on those two state funds as well as we looked at SIR2, which is two-year. It's easy to remember because it's SIR2, two years, SIR3, three years. Now what we've learned is that the state has changed this in August. So now ELO is three years, as well as IPI is three years, and SIR3 is three years. So basically, what we did was we budgeted things in terms of like how many years we were going to implement things. So to answer that question, we budgeted things at the same time. So SIR2, we budgeted items and SIR3, we budgeted items at the same time when we were looking at everything.
And does this include summer school for 2022?
For 2122?
For this coming summer.
For this coming summer, for 2022. Oh, yeah, right, I understand. Now I understand. So at this time, there is some money budgeted in SIR3, but what we're going to have to do is look at the funding. And we have funding available in SIR2.
Okay.
So we have, I believe, 800 to almost a million dollars, 800,000 to almost a million. So we do have funds available.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're budgeting for summer school for this coming summer.
Right. And just remember, like, this is a plan for now, but as things continue to change, we will continue to readjust the plan. As you know, we've had problems hiring. So if we don't have money left over, then we can change money to address what we want to hit in terms of next summer and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Simms-Morton, thank you.
Yes, thank you for this plan. It's, it's really clear and comprehensive. I just have a question and I, this is a risk of adding more work and I don't want to do that. So if you can talk me to somewhere else, I can get it, then great. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about our mental health, you know. Dawson has talked about it quite a bit. Is, and I know that we're doing a lot of work on mental health. Is there a way to pull out a matrix like this to say, this is the mental health interventions that we're doing? So it's clear what we're doing on mental health and how much we're spending time, be it staff time or dollars. It's just not always clear how much we're spending on mental health, supporting mental health, which, which is something that's constantly coming up. So is there a way to do another matrix that specifically looks at mental health and what we're doing to that? Because I know we do a lot of programs with regards to that. I know we, we have contracts with Calm, I believe. So is there a way to do that? And I don't want to add more work, but maybe you have it somewhere else that's easy to pull it out.
Doctor Maldonado?
Thank you for that question, Board Member Simms-Morton. In November, we plan to bring an update to the board on both academic and social, emotional status, per se. The report of, you know, the status quo, how things are, how kids are doing in terms of those two areas. So we'll work to create something that'll capture what you're describing. We'll reach out to you separately to see if it's what you're thinking about.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, you know, there's been a request from the public. We hear a lot of those public comments. So just be able to address that and where we are on that, those interventions and how we've improved. and how we've improved or what things we need to continue to do. So if you're already doing that, then great.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
The only thing I might suggest that you consider would be to color code the ESER plan according to whether it's addressing academic needs, social-emotional needs, et cetera, technology, because I think it will make it clear to us that the 20% is there and also that there are a number of positions that are funded here specifically to address social, emotional, and mental health. Just something to think about. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Board members, then, I would call for a motion. And this time, the motion is to address and to approve the Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Relief, number three, expenditure plan.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Monten. And is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Board members, all in favor of approval of this plan for expenditures of ESER? Please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Vance. That takes us to our last two reports of the evening. And remember, these are reports, so there's no action to be taken by the board, but of course, opportunities for the public to comment and opportunities for board members to ask questions and comments. The first one is the board review of draft number one of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board Governance Handbook. And I do want to note that this was postponed from our last board meeting on October 12th. It's a report item only, but there may be some questions. I've asked the board to look at it carefully. Ms. Alvarez and I worked on this together, and Ms. Alvarez has agreed to present this board a summary this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. It was quite a pleasure to work with you, and we could not help ourselves. We both work in the schools and bouncing ideas off of each other, so it was a true pleasure. And it was also working with Dr. Maldonado and Mr. Vance as well. And we present to you tonight basically what, it's similar to a job description, a job description for board members and also for board candidates, so that when a member of the public is considering to run for the board, he or she will have the opportunity to refer to this and say, oh, these are the roles of our trustee, this is, these are the expectations. And also, something new in this JD or this job description is the opportunity for board candidates to have a meeting with the superintendent to go over questions they might have about the district or about meetings and just general information. So that's something new in this board, I mean, in this job description. And also, it talks about principles and protocols, the what and the how. And of course, it clearly defines the board's role, that is to set direction, and also that the board is a body. One board member really has no authority. The board has authority as a whole, and that's also described in this handbook. In addition to that, we had the discussion to have this handbook, once it's reviewed by all of us, and we agree on a handbook that is on our website, so that it's a resource for the community. It's a resource for us as well. And in addition to that, to develop a governance calendar. And the governance calendar will be on our website in the name of transparency and to improve communication with the public, so the public will know, okay, at the December board meeting, Kim Hernandez is going to present the first interim, right? He's going to present the first interim budget. And at the March 15, Dr. Bencio is going to present proposed staffing scenarios. So this has statutory deadlines that the board has to take action on and that we have to be very mindful, which includes the organization of the meeting. For example, the number of public comments that we might be able to accommodate to make sure that we get to statutory items. So in summary, that's my share. Ms. Ford, anything else?
No, that was great. I do think it's important to say that we did our best to be creative and thoughtful, but we also did a lot of research, and we tried to take from the best handbooks that we could find. And it was very helpful, especially this idea of stating a principle and then following up with protocols. So I greatly appreciate the opportunity to work on this with Ms. Alvarez and would also just like to get any feedback from board members, if you have it, so that we can go forward and in November, approve it. So, board members, well, first of all, just see if there are any public comments, Mr. Hill?
No public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Board members, any comments or questions for us, any suggestions you'd like to make? Ms. Sims-Monten?
Yes, first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for this and know that you guys did a really good job. I worked with both of you on several other things, so I know you're really doing your research. So I appreciate that. It made it much easier to follow, and you could certainly see the diligence that you put there. Just a couple of comments. I was just reading in our California School News. It was just talking about that, and it was just saying, though trustees run as individuals, they govern as a team. So this is very appropriate. A strong governance team that abides by agreed-upon norms and protocols is better able to handle pressures during crisis, and I would say at any point, specifically when you're coming in new and have really no idea in terms of that. And that was quoted by Terry Vigil. He's a trustee, I'm assuming he, she might be a trustee at Fall River Joint Unified School District. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And then on, I think, okay, and then can we add page numbers?
Sure.
And maybe?
Oh, we'll add page numbers, and also if you wanted to refer to anything, the principles are numbered.
Okay, yeah. No, I think it's like third page in, and it really is just, it's number five under demonstrate community leadership.
Sure.
The last bullet, ensure that the community and stakeholders have engaged. I was wondering if we could see more active that, ensure that community and stakeholders engage, so it's active as opposed to they've done it and we're over it.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. I don't think I have, I think, yeah, it was just page numbers in that piece, and then just appreciation for the work that you guys have done on this. And I think that was it. Oh, I think there was one that said, it's just me. When you say raise your hand and say aye at the same time, I forget to raise my hand. Do we really have to do that? But that's just me. I say aye, that's my affirmative.
It's a holdover. It's a good question, but it's a holdover, especially from when we started Zoom, and it was very hard to focus on all five of us at one time. I still think it's a visual that helps, so thank you for bringing that up.
It's just my comment, but like, if you don't see me do that, it's just, it's me. So again, appreciate for your work on this.
Really appreciate your comments. Any others, please? Mr. Kelly?
I was wondering if there was anything regarding this student board member specifically in this resolution?
Not in the handbook itself, just the fact that, I'm not sure where it is, where we acknowledge that we have a student board member.
Yeah, I was looking for that as well.
But I'm thinking, now that you brought it up, that we could definitely add some, a job description of the student board member also, since it's, you know, most of these regulations certainly would apply to the student board member, but also maybe a little bit about how the student board member is chosen and the length of the term, et cetera. So is that what you were kind of thinking? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds appropriate.
Yeah, and I'm happy to SSU with that in any way.
Okay. Maybe we'll take a stab at it and then ask for your reflections and thoughts about it.
Perfect.
Sound good, Ms. Alvarez? Great. Okay, thank you. Ms. Capps?
Hey, just again, want to echo the thanks for the tedious work here that you did of putting it together. And I just encourage this to be on the board website, on the, I'm sure you are doing that, but maybe even spelling out just the top-line goals, because I do think that, you know, what we actually do as a board, we can't assume people understand. So putting that on there, putting it on the page would be helpful as people are looking for times of meetings, et cetera. So thank you.
I think that's really good feedback, and I think a long time ago, Ms. Sims-Monten, you made that about this idea that not only gives us guidance, but it, for our jobs as we hold them once we're elected, but also to give people an idea of what we do, why we do it, and give guidance to people who might consider running. Because it seems like some folks may have been misinformed about what we do. Ms. Alvarez?
One thing I did forget is a future discussion item that we can review, the mission statement.
Yes, that's right.
And I think, I think we talked about that, but we haven't brought it up to the rest of the board members. So that's a to-do. It's not, it's not in this yet.
Thank you very much. Yes, we have the current mission statement there, but we actually felt like, especially as we were looking at lots of other handbooks, that we might be very smart to reconsider our own mission statement at this time. Ms. Munoz, please?
Yes, I appreciated the clarity of it, you know, the principle and, is it the protocol? And also, you know, posting it on the website so that the members of the public will know how we respond to requests, how we act as a, you know, as one versus as individuals. And so, yeah, I appreciate all the work that both of you did on it.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further comments, I think what we will do is go through and make some changes to it, and then with the goal of possibly just not only having it as an action agenda item, but putting it on the consent agenda. Do you have any comments or questions? Dr. Maldonado?
Just appreciation for the clear guidance. Thank you.
My pleasure. And on to our final report for tonight. This is also an item that was postponed from last week. We're very excited. This board has shown much interest, and this title of the item is expanding access to differentiated rigorous learning opportunities. And it looks like I will turn it over to Ms. Escobedo.
That is correct. Good evening, President Ford, esteemed board members, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado, and of course, members of our audience. Tonight, we are reporting on the need to expand access to differentiated rigorous learning opportunities, specifically for our GATE and HONOR classes. Santa Barbara Unified School District is committed to ensuring equitable student outcomes by expanding access to and differentiation of rigorous learning in alignment to policies at the state and local level. Student data will be shared tonight that illustrates current inequities in access to these opportunities for all of our students. In January of this year, our board passed and adopted Resolution Number 2020/2122, affirming the district's commitment to justice through equity-driven policies, procedures, and practices, which states in its opening, "We believe that all students can achieve at high levels and that equitable classrooms are critical to their success. Eliminating disparities in educational opportunities is fundamental to the nature of public education. The district is committed to overcoming barriers to learning that have been identified through educational research. Because we so believe this, we are here presenting to you tonight." Next slide, please. With our equity resolution comes a renewed commitment and responsibility to ensure we do better when we know better for all of our students. Historically, we know that in elementary, access to differentiated rigorous learning opportunities has not been equitable for all of our students. Historically, we have had a disproportionate number of white students qualifying and enrolling in our district's GATE magnet program as compared to our Latinx or to any other population of students in our district. As a result, we have seen our schools of residence be negatively impacted by the disenrollment of students once identified gifted. And our GATE program options and supports across our district have historically been inconsistent and have not benefited from the needed professional development to meet our students' needs. And in the last three years, we have seen a decrease in both students qualifying for GATE and GATE-qualifying students enrolling in our district magnet program. In elementary, these factors have created a district-wide inequity in access to rigorous learning program options for all students. Next slide. The data is clear, and although we have known about this data and these inequities for some time, the data is telling us that we have waited too long to address this. So the time to do better is now. As we review our district's historical data for elementary GATE testing and qualifications, which you see here, it is important to remember that approximately 64% of our elementary students are Emergent Multilingual Learners, EMLs. Also a reminder, as you're looking at this data, all of our second-grade students are tested for GATE students, for GATE testing unless their parents opt out. Having said all that, and as you can see by the data in front of you, only 39% of our EML students have qualified for GATE as opposed to 61% of our English-only students. When we follow that data of those qualifying students who enroll in our district's magnet program, which this year happens to be approximately 90 students, the inequity widens significantly by demographic and gender. 59% of the students enrolled in our GATE magnet program are white, 26% are Latinx or Hispanic, 12% are Asian, and 3% identifying as two or more race or declining to state altogether. Our gender inequity data shows that 55% of our GATE magnet students are male versus 45% being female, on track to contributing to the overall gender gap that we know still exists in many sectors. As I hand it off to my colleague, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary, Sean Carey, I would like to remind us all of one last very important detail, that being that our elementary district GATE magnet program has no feeder program into secondary, none, essentially ending the district program at sixth grade. To tell us more about how these inequities are unfolding in our secondary schools, I will now hand it off to Ms. Carey.
Thank you, Ms. Escobedo, and good evening, President Ford, board members, Dr. Maldonado. At this point, I'm going to walk you through some compelling, high-level data that describes how inequitable access to rigorous learning expresses itself in our secondary grades. First of all, advanced courses, when we're talking about grades seven through 12, that means in high school context, we really equate that with college-level coursework, and we talk about those courses being AP classes, IB or International Baccalaureate classes, and also our dual enrollment classes, which we have a very robust dual enrollment partnership with Santa Barbara City College. We also include honors courses, which exist in ninth and 10th grade in English and a couple other spots in high school, but also in our junior highs in all four subject areas. So just know that that's what we mean by advanced courses. Students are either enrolled in advanced courses, like the ones I've just described, or they're enrolled in what we call college prep courses. And those courses are toggled, they are matched to, they are standards-aligned, grade-level classes with curriculum, that we are making strides always to have improved to the level of what we consider to be guaranteed viable curriculum. And what we mean by the phrase guaranteed viable curriculum is a consistent and high-quality curricular experience. So that does include the state standards, but it also includes instructional materials, and perhaps most importantly, having guaranteed viable curriculum means having clearly defined and articulated learning experiences. means having clearly defined and articulated learning experiences. So you are, I hope, familiar by now with our grade-level expectations, which we have published for elementary students, and our end-of-course expectations, which we have published and disseminated for our secondary students and families and staff. And as you have heard, I heard several of you mention reports from October 18th, we are continuing to develop our ability to consistently assess students' progress in meeting those end-of-course and grade-level expectations. So as you'll see more specifically in a moment, we have made positive gains in terms of increasing and broadening access to the advanced courses that I described and defined earlier. But there have also been some secondary effects of those shifts. Finally, as you'll see in a moment, the data tells us that there's a strong correlation between enrollment in advanced courses and other kinds of opportunities for students, especially GPA and class rank, but also college and career readiness, including A through G eligibility. So with that opening, let's look at some of the data. This table here features data displaying the rates of course enrollment, which is disaggregated by certain student groups, including race, socioeconomic status, a label that I'm calling EVEREL. So this is a combination of EML students and re-designated fluent English proficient students, students whose home language is a language other than English, as well as students with disabilities and homeless and foster youth. This table about our junior highs also shows us multi-year trends. We can look at three data points over eight years and see a positively increasing trend for every student group, which is a testament to the work of staff and students and families to date to achieve more proportionality. And definitely, there's some admirable gains that have been made. Having said that, there are two observations that we need to call out. Number one, as you can like, as you can likely see, there is a rising tide floating all boats, so to speak, but it is not necessarily floating all boats equitably. So in 2012, we see a 42%, a 42-point gap between students of color and white students. And by 2020, there are higher rates of enrollment for both groups, even significantly so, but there's still a 35-point gap between the two groups, which is a reduction in the gap of only seven points from 42 to 35. So as Ms. Escobedo said, we can't afford, assuming the continuation of current trends, to wait eight more years to see that gap between these two groups or any two groups. I continue to close by an additional six or seven points. We have to change our approach. Next slide, please. On this slide, we see the data on enrollment in advanced courses for our high schools. So again, a reminder that in high school, the label advanced courses includes advanced placement courses or AP, IB courses, International Baccalaureate, and dual enrollment courses, as well as some of our advanced math courses and the courses that have the honors distinction or the honors label. Most prominently, English nine honors and English 10 honors. So as you can see, the trends are remarkably similar for high school as compared to the junior high dates, or junior high datas, rather. So similar, in fact, that I'm going to ask the presenter to just click, and you'll see kind of an animation here. I've just lifted the 2020 data from the junior high slide. And you can see the stability of the data from last year for our junior high students as compared to our high school students, which is my third key observation I want to relay to you. So with the exception of homeless and foster youth, which is, which is a, a group that has more fluctuation year over year in, in terms of demographics and incidence, the difference between the 2020 rates for junior high and high school is remarkably consistent across groups. So while individual students may move in or out of the honors or advanced coursework pathway during the course of their six years in grades seven through 12, this data points to a more rigidly tracked system of education with different experiences that are based on groups that students belong to. In January, this board passed a resolution on justice through equity-driven practices. In that resolution, you stated a commitment to ensuring that student achievement will not fall into predictable patterns identified by culture, race, or ethnicity. And furthermore, that the district's professional learning program will support teachers in implementing practices that will disrupt the predictable patterns of student achievement identified by culture, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. Next slide, please. I've included this slide here separately from the others just to remind us of, of who we are. We just had a presentation earlier today and throughout recent board meetings about the unique configuration of our district, especially as when you look at PK six versus 712 and the unique topography and geography of our, of our community. So just as, this is a reminder of the enrollment, the proportionate enrollment of the various student groups that I've been presenting to you about in this report in junior high and in high school, just so you have that for context as we look at those rates of enrollment in advanced courses. So it's, it's a reminder for context. Also, for example, if we know that white students overall make up about a third of the district's junior high enrollment, that's good, that's important to know when we consider that white students enroll at an 87% rate in honors-level classes or advanced courses. Students of color make up 62% of enrollment, but just half of students of color take at least one honors or advanced course. So that's there for, for that context. Last slide. So the compilation and presentation of this data, both elementary and secondary, and the high-level statements that summarize what the data show point us to take action as staff in light of the district's current policies and expressed commitments. As we plan our, our response, we as staff consider this essential question. How do we ensure equitable access to and appropriate differentiation of rigorous learning? How do we expand that access? With consistency in GATE identification and programming across sites for elementary students and consistency across honors and college prep programs for secondary students. On that count and in support of our students, we look forward to your guidance and we are available to take your questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Escobedo and Ms. Carey. First of all, I'd like to know if there are any public comments on this issue. Mr. Hio.
Thank you, President Ford. Yes, we have one public comment on this item. Maria Castner.
Thank you.
Maria Castner, can you hear us? If you can please unmute yourself to speak. Um, not, she's not unmuted herself. Maria Castner, can you unmute yourself? Okay, um, she is not, maybe she's having difficulties with the computer. That concludes public comment on this item, President Ford.
Mr. Hio, thank you so much. I will go on to board comments and questions and please let me know if she's able to call in at some point during this agenda item. So, board members, I'd like to open it up to you now. As although we don't have any action to take tonight, I think this is something we have been craving. I'm so grateful for the level of thought and sort of the ugly facts that are out there. You know, you sort of have to face facts before you can actually move forward and shame on us if we don't face these facts. So, board members, any additional questions, information you'd like as we go forward to address this issue? Ms. Alvarez, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that data, for that information. I know this is something that I've been wanting for a long, long time. We have to be honest with ourselves and tackle the good, the bad, and the ugly, as mentioned before. I'd like to get a little bit more of data, not today, obviously, to disseminate the data a little bit deeper, to get a better understanding and perhaps come up with a better plan. For example, what I was thinking today when I was reading your report is, and maybe you've already done this, have you done a comparison and contrast? For example, how many students are in AP placement per session? How many in AP English literature versus how many in AP Spanish? The demographics. I, I bet there's going to be a big difference there as far as the demographics, let's say, in AP Biology versus AP Spanish, for example. And also, the prerequisites are, how are we helping students to be successful in the prerequisites so that they can advance into this advanced courses? So that was another wondering that I had. And then the dual enrollment classes at Santa Barbara City College, what are our demographics on that? Because I, I know that there's a big difference between, for example, science at the high school and bio, for example, 100 or 101 at City College, because the college board sets the requirements at Santa Barbara City College where at the high school is different. So I bet there's, there's a big difference there in the demographics. So I'm interested in, in getting deeper and finding out how, what does that look like? So that we can come up with, with, in my mind, a better plan. And then also, the other thing I was thinking is, how is the collaboration between high schools, junior highs, and elementary schools so that we can help the, the students as a unified district? I know a while back when my son was at Dos Pueblos that they had a teacher from Adams at their engineering academy, and that was a partnership. And I thought that was a great model to help in some way, like a pathway or something where we start with elementary, at the elementary level. So those are my, my wishes, my, in my perfect world, I like to see that data. And then the other question that I have is, when you had the slide where it shows the different percentages of EML students and there was a gain, which is, which is a good thing, my wondering is, as far as the overall percentage of the 12,000 or 1300, or 13,000 students in those years, what was the percentage of EML overall in the district? So because that's going to give us a true comparison of, of our performance, how are we doing? Because the percentage is, is increasing, but I like to compare it as the overall. So if 60% of our population are Latinx, and out of that 60%, 30% are EMLs, and 20% of those EMLs are in advanced courses, but then the following year, the overall percentage is higher. I, I like to see the variance. How, how are we growing? How are we doing? Does that make sense? And like I said, I'm not, I don't expect answers tonight. It's more questions than, than answers. So, thank you.
I do have a, thank you for that, board member Alvarez. I do have a couple of brief responses. And one is that I'm glad that our chief information officer is in the room to hear those requests because we have a lot of that readily available. Some of it we have to work with our partnering institutions on. But what I hear you saying is, let's also look at this in terms of both, both ends, from both ends. And, and I'm going to use the word institution because we'll see, Santa Barbara City College is another institution, but the college board is an institution. The International Baccalaureate organization is an institution. These are institutions that externally prescribe the curriculum and assessment versus those, those things that we generate internally. And so how, what are the differences as we look at it that way? As well as across subject matters and, and student groups. So, um, thank you for, thank you for that.
And then one, one more thing. I think providing support to be successful is extremely important. Because we, let's say we focus and we increase the enrollment in these classes. Well, once you're there, how are we going to make sure that you are given the support that you need so that you can remain? Because on the slides, it showed the number of students enrolled. I'm wondering how many of those students completed the class successfully? So if you have 100 students enroll, out of those 100, how many were able to move on and and meet the A through G requirements, for example? That's, that's the data I would love to see so that I can better understand. And I'm not sure if you were asking for more comments or guidance, but I have more questions right now. And if later on you want more comments, I can come back. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be responsive to two things. One is that part of what you can know from seeing those gains is that we've had a lot of concerted conversations about the types of support that are more effective. But the idea is, we need to do more and go deeper if we want that rate of acceleration to be different than it has been. And the other thing I want to just clarify while I have the opportunity to do so is, one of the shifts that we made several years ago was to actually remove barriers to accessing the courses or to enrolling the courses in the form of prerequisites that are required, which doesn't mean that we're not considering on-ramps for students, preparation for students, and then subsequently support once they are enrolled.
Thank you. Other comments and questions, please. Ms. Sims-Moten?
Yes, thank you for this report. I, I remember being here on, I think, 2017, 18, when we started to look at this. So I'm, I'm glad to see the, the progress that we've made on that and we know that we, this is giving us a chance to get better at what we're doing. So I appreciate that. But, you know, the first slide, I think, or the second one, we talk about expanding access to differentiated rigorous learning opportunities. If I'm looking at this language, you know, it says historically disproportionate enrollment of white and Latinos students. There's nobody else in that language. So maybe folks don't feel like they're part of it. I, I know what the data said, but it's also saying that too. You know, access is, do I see myself in the language, in the descriptions, all of that. So I, I like this kind of work on that because that's primarily what we see. And then, and I understand all the, the, you know, the points about identification. So I get that. But if you don't even see yourself in the historical that you've been disproportionate as well, then you don't feel like you can access it. That's, that's another way of, that's a barrier of accessing it. Because if you don't see yourself in the language and description of what we're doing here, that's, that's a barrier to access, to see if I can be a part of it, right? And so, and then, so then it turns out like, oh, and other students. So then it feels like you're being othered. I, I talked about that early on. We, we, that other, you want to be a part of, I want to see mentioned in this, all of our groups. But other groups, when you say that, when you, you make so distinct, such a distinction here, and then it's other, you feel othered and not a part of. So I think that's really something important we need to think about as, as we go forward. And I think the other piece about, how do we start early? So I did hear the PK six, really appreciate that. So, um, you know, where do we go with families? How do we, you know, engage our families in the early care and education, even in preschools? What do we do? How, how do we do that? You know, certainly want to be a partner as first five, looking at those early times. How do we start to really look at this early? Because we probably see those same disproportionals in preschool, we just perhaps haven't looked at those numbers. But those are, that is the root, and that is the start of things. So something we might want to, you know, take into consideration. Those are my comments, but I just want to make sure, as we're looking at access, how we using our family engagement opportunities that we talk about in our LCPS and different things, how are we using that as an opportunity to increase and expand access. So again, appreciate this report, where we, where we've been, where we're going, and know where we can get to.
Appreciate that. Ms. Manias, please.
Yes, also, as Ms. Sims-Moten mentioned, I was concerned about like the early elementary school, the beginning there, and the enrollment of the students in, you know, GATE and magnet programs. I like the approach. I like, you know, that both of you are go-getters and you want to make a difference in this. I think that, you know, from early elementary school, the students need to see themselves as, hey, I'm going to do this. I'm going to be in these types of classes. And then also outreach to their families, to their parents early on, because they have, you know, let's say, two or three kids to say, you know, this is what's going on. I'm finding out about it. These are the questions to ask. Because parents don't even know sometimes what to ask. I mean, I've certainly been there in, in different ways, both, you know, on our website, in media, presentations in the community, I think would be very helpful. I know I've talked to parent groups who will ask about, you know, what can I do to help my son or daughter get, you know, become successful and be a part of what they're talking about? So that this, the kids, you know, you know, this, that they see themselves as, as I can do this, rather than like, well, I can't do that. I can't do, you know, that and so forth. And, and then just sharing a lot of information about it. The excitement, you know, I love that you convey. The excitement, you know, I love that you convey that excitement so then when they do go to junior high, they're already saying, you know, these are my goals, this is what I'm going to be able to do for all students. You know, it certainly can be language, but it's also cultural, social, you know, economically disadvantaged and having that opportunity. And we do have, you know, programs in the junior high and high schools that are, you know, such as PEAK and so forth and as much as possible within our funding to broaden that to all students, as Ms. Sims-Moten was saying, I think, you know, but just early on so that they're four or five years old and they're already gung ho about this. So, yeah.
I would love to just quickly just state in order, we really completely agree with that expanding of even categories. Right now, our only way to be identified is through a second grade assessment that, like I said, is given to all second graders and then other grade levels, if they haven't taken it, can ask to take it in order to expand it to the lower grades. Really thinking about what other areas of Gate gifted and talented can we look into in order to really build from pre-K up those opportunities that are not just solely based on one assessment, one ability area.
So, Anna, can you expand on the other school district and some of the areas in our experience, the different areas and the different methods for identifying giftedness?
Yes. There are up to seven areas that I'm aware of, both here in California and nationwide for identification, for categories of identification. Those include areas, again, the gifted, highly gifted, depending on the test. Leadership, the arts, visual and performing arts, which again, are more of a performance-based, portfolio-based qualification. There are also areas that, you know, at this point, I can't remember the other, but there are multiple areas, up to seven, that language is, multiple languages another one and they'll come to me as I sit down. But again, those are all, given the students, different age spans, opportunities to really demonstrate their gifted and talented skills in different methods.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. I asked Anna because she used to be a principal at a magnet school that had gifted, highly gifted students with a variety of identifications of talents and giftedness. And I think we need to broaden our scope and think about the different types of students that we serve with the different unique gifts that we all bring. And so, thank you for that. I put you on the spot, but we will make sure that we include that in our report back to the board and in any direction that you want us to take next. Thank you. And Ms. Capps?
Yeah, that's the key point is what next? Because you've, as has been stated, these are tough truths to be laid out in front of us, seeing this complete racial disparity. We know that we're missing kids that should be in these programs and I really appreciate and I want to make sure it's communicated very clearly, this is about expanding opportunities, not limiting. And so important and just what you answered right now, and this is more closely something I've experienced, is, you know, a test that second graders take and then they get on, you know, a small minority, mostly white, get on this path. And yet, there's so many other assessments that you educators, I can tell, are excited about pursuing. Excuse me. So I just want to think about what's next. You've, you know, presented a lot of alarming data. We've known about it. This was a priority going into COVID for me and for other staff members I know and other potential board members. And yet, of course, this isn't, it wasn't something we could tackle during, you know, when school wasn't meeting in person. So now, here we are and I just want to express my strong encouragement for action items, for tangible ways in which we can take this data that you've put together and your assessments and your smart analysis and move forward as quickly as possible, understanding what a massive change is. I just, again, personally see what the Magnet program, I have a lot of concerns about it and the way in which kids, again, mostly non-white kids are being left behind and not given those opportunities that our education code mandates they have. So I'd like to give some general direction for some more tangible action steps, recommendations from the staff. I think that's the right move here going forward so that we can, as a board, actually make decisions and change, remedy this disparity. Thank you.
So we're certainly hearing from you tonight, some examples of possible action steps, including expanding the types of assessment used to identify giftedness in the early grades. We're hearing about family and parent engagement, not just that it be early, but that we also take a lot of care with how we do that family and parent engagement. I'm hearing you talk about a broadening and expansion of access to PEAK or broadening of those PEAK strategies that we know are so effective and, among other things, including a deeper dive at the data so we can best understand the phenomenon. I also think that we should make you aware that we can come back to you with some suggestions around those possible action steps for you to weigh in on and to just be sort of, you know, mindful of the rhythms of school years. We're coming up on the part of the school year when we do talk a lot about planning for the subsequent school year, which has to do with Magnet programs, testing cycles, course request windows, things like that. So we can come back to you with a robust series of possible actions for you to consider and give us your direction on.
I'd like to add to that, Ms. Carey, that we know that during COVID, we have been able to also expand opportunities through a block schedule or expanding opportunities through different modes of scheduling students, particularly in the high schools. Board members, we will bring back something to that effect as well because we know that going from a sixth period to an A period, while it does increase the time a student spends in the class, it does provide high school principals and others opportunities to have more access to some of these courses. Please correct me if I'm saying it exactly right, but that's another area that I think we can build on some of the things that are positive that are coming out of the way we're scheduling students in schools.
Yeah, I would just say it's not not about a block schedule, but it's more about the number of course takes that you can access and specifically that that's consistent and equitable across school sites. Whether or not that's extended block periods or not is part of the design part of bell schedules, but it is about that opportunity for expanded and equivalent course takes across high school.
Thank you. Mr. Carey, do you have any comments?
Yeah. Thank you so much for this presentation. I'm glad we're looking into this. Slide six, I was wondering, it says percent enrolled in advanced courses. Does that just mean like if I'm in one English honors course, I qualify? And is that just throughout the whole year or pro semester because we're on block?
The whole year.
The whole year.
The whole year. So for your plan of study that year? Yeah. Your schedule of classes that school year?
All right. And then, yeah, just moving forward, I think it's important to be proactive when we're thinking of solutions for these inequities and really starting early on before these gaps widen even more. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. I would just like to echo so much of the intent and the feelings of the board. I want to also commend you for excellent organization of this. I think organizing your report by contributing factors and then backing it up with alarming and unacceptable data. I hope you can tell that this board is desperate to be your partners in this and to write this wrong. You mentioned it a little, but I think that it's important that we're well aware that there are timelines and practicalities that have to be addressed in order to increase access and eliminate these inequities. So can you be specific about what you need from the board? We've sort of told you what we'd like from you. For example, do you need policy from the board that reflects this sort of change in
Potentially. I can see a couple of areas where we could potentially need policy. Other things that might be guidance, for example, to your question about timelines, I'll just educate the board that in the secondary system, we are usually finalizing the course catalog prior to winter break so that when we return from winter break, we immediately start with a rollover of semesters and the beginning of gathering the course requests. So if there's any changes to the courses themselves that need to take place, that has to happen in short order for this next school year or on cycle next school year would be a timeline point. Dr. Malanato rightly points out that there is a nexus to the bell schedule design process as well, which we're about to enter into about a month of stakeholder engagement around future bell schedules. So there could be guidance, direction, or policies resulting from those things for secondary. And I would say, yes, we have some existing policy that Ms. Escobedo can speak to.
Yes, so absolutely. Any, as a result of the data, if you can give us or provide us with guidance on next steps, that would be very helpful. As far as the calendar for elementary, not as complicated as in secondary. We do, however, have testing that happens, that is actually happening right now in elementary. And then as a result of the gate testing, then there is a lottery and there is a policy around all of those different calendar actions that happen for elementary as far as policy in our district and transfers, that includes qualifying students, transfers, et cetera. And all of that happens and is beginning to be put into motion so that it can be ready for January. And so, I think what, in asking for the actions, I think one of the things we have talked about and want to make sure we consider is that stakeholder engagement so that we can get the feedback that helps us when we are making these future timelines and plans and actions that will, you know, obviously create great change.
Great. I definitely appreciate that you want our feedback. I think we've given very clear feedback on increasing access, increasing communication, increasing even and changing wording so that people do not feel othered and also looking at better, more creative assessments of giftedness or ability to tackle different kinds of curriculum and to differentiate. So I could see that you, you know, we have the factors, we have the data. It seems to me that the next sort of suggestion should be solutions and a timeline. And if you can bring that to the board, I can guarantee that we'll be as assertive and aggressive about this as possible. Ms. Sims-Moten?
Yes, can I just add, it's just more like agenda management because we remember the last time we kind of brought this up that, you know, it took a lot of time on our agenda and we had to move some things around. So I would suggest good, maybe it's such a controversial in some minds that we give due time on the agenda to discuss it and receive the public feedback that we will get, for sure. So in taking into consideration.
Appreciate that. And Ms. Alvarez, please.
Yeah, and one more thing to add to your list, Ms. Carey, is a greater partnership, starting with elementary, junior high, and high school. Because I, by the time they're in junior high or high school, it might be too late. We have to get these kids in elementary school and provide the support that they need. It'd be great to have the dialogue with the principals. I'm thinking of Harding, they had, I don't know if they still do, they had an IB program.
They do.
They go to Harding, they go to La Cumbre, to Cornellage, they go to Dos Pueblos for the IB. I mean, that's partnership, those are pathways. And then the statistics are great. Thank you. And what about the academies? When are we going to see the statistics for the different academies? I think that'd be important for us to know as well.
Well, Stephanie, I have that as a future agenda item. Well, President, if I may, I also would like to ask, and I'll ask my staff and bring to you, any potential policy changes that we will need your support with? Yes. Particularly when it comes to the enrollment in some of the programs. And we also want to do it thoughtfully so it's not just about getting rid of something without putting something in place. So that's something that we will also be very mindful in our planning. Thank you. Appreciate that greatly. Any other comments from Ms. Escobedo or Ms. Carey?
Just appreciation for engaging with us on this complicated but really important topic. Thank you for your time tonight.
We'll be there for you and for our students. So thank you very much. Board members, that takes us toward the ending times of this meeting and really appreciate your engagement so far. I encourage you to take a look at the future agenda items and also coming events and be sure to let us know if there are any other additional items that you would like to have added to this so that the public and board members are fully informed on what we're planning to do and what's out there in the coming months. I want to remind everyone that there is just one board meeting in November. It is Tuesday, November 16th and it will be by virtual participation by the public. And with that, I will move to adjourn and only just say that when I think about giftedness in particular, I often think of many of the comments and the life of Albert Einstein and who was very gifted but probably would not have been identified as gifted in many ways in many of our schools. So, an important quote of his is that "intelligence is not defined by knowledge, it is defined by imagination." And so, I just challenge us always to keep moving forward, imagining the very, very best for our students. And with that, this meeting of the Santa Barbara Board of Education is adjourned. Good evening.